Okay, good evening, everyone. Today is April 30th, 2025, the month has flown by. This is the meeting of the Gloucester School Committee. We are meeting at Gloucester High School. The public is welcome to attend meetings in person or alternatively through the Zoom link provided on the agenda. The meeting notice will reflect if the meeting is the Zoom only. As the recent amendments to open meeting law allow, the school committee may continue to hold meetings remotely. Please note that in-person meeting will not be suspended or terminated technically for logical problems interrupt the remote connection. So I'll call this meeting to order and state that the commission of Gloucester Public Schools calls students to be successful, engaged, lifelong learners. I think I'll do the salute to the flag and then have the introductions after that. So we'll do introductions as to who is present. Sorry, Principal Cook.
James Cook, Principal of Gloucester High School.
Gary Fresh, CFO.
Ben Lama, Superintendent.
Jeremy McCain, School Committee.
Keith Minio, School Committee.
Kathy Clancy, School Committee.
Greg Bergen, Mayor.
Brenda Walsack, CVT Coordinator, Gloucester High.
Kevin Johnson, student at Gloucester High School and enrolled in the electrical program.
Dwight Johnson, Kevin's father. I also have another son Dwight in the electrical program, junior and senior. I'm a former graduate of the high school auto shop program as well.
Stephanie Delaney, C, recording second. Okay. So the first part of our meeting is a general advisory update on our career vocational technical program. And that will be done by Brenda and her.
This is an update on career vocational education. What we are trying to do is expand curriculum opportunities and improve the facilities for Gloucester High students. We have onboarding, medical assisting. We have a new exploratory program for the fall. We are having tried to increase our pathways through field trips, site visits, work, study, and internships. Our career education includes assemblies, guest speakers, and special events. We have community connections through Action Inc., Biotech Academy, Gloucester, Greater Cape Town Chamber of Commerce, and Gloucester Education Foundation, among others. We want to enhance the workplace job skills with well-spring youth and adult career advisors who are housed at the school. We want to coordinate and leverage the support of the Gloucester Educational Foundation. We want to strengthen and grow the existing programs, create more partnerships, expand the programs with more students and a broader range of students, and maximize some funding sources. We kicked off the fall with a Cape Town Community Foundation $2,500 grant for medical assisting and help with construction costs. Also through GEF, Ruth Pino donated $17,000 for a storage building to help keep the wood dry. We have space issues, so a space for wood storage was key. The new building is being constructed with carpentry students and it will be a memorial to Ruth's husband. This year, we got the, it was a 2024 grant, but it came through in the fall. It was $93,000. Automotive Department got a new alignment machine for $78,000. The carpentry dust collection system was installed and maintained for air quality in the cabinet making and carpentry shops. In response to our advisory committee that advises us on skills that students need for work-study. One of our members said that they needed, the electrical students needed more work with residential work because they do a lot of commercial work. So carpentry came in and built a half a house so that electrical students could wire it up as residential. The electrical department in turn went over to carpentry and wired a band saw, table saw, drill press, shaper, and dust collector. Some of it was new equipment, some of it was old equipment that was shifted around so we can make room for this exploratory program and the students could have workstations. Some of our networking opportunities include the I E W Local 103 Fall Open House. Did you, Kevin, did you attend that one? Did you go with Dwight in the fall?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, how was that?
It was good.
Yeah?
Really, really good.
Yes. You think you're going to be an apprentice? Maybe. We have our Girls in Trades Fall Conference and we had the Leadership Summit, which the girls went to first week in April. We received a Mass Clean Energy Center grant for our advanced manufacturing and automotive upgrades. And we added, we're adding EV curriculum as the need for EV technicians increases in Cape Town. We got 276-ish from the state and 671 from federal grant monies. We use this grant for advanced manufacturing computers. The OS 10, the operating system, is passe, so we are upgrading to operating system 11. We have new compressors for the pneumatic tools that would be for carpentry, advanced manufacturing, and automotive. We are redoing, we have a small automotive classroom space, so that's being gutted, painted, upgraded, and we're adding educational curriculum simulators for traditional and electric vehicles. We are getting new automotive furniture. We also purchased a cabinet for EV training PPE. It's very expensive. Protective equipment for EV training is hugely expensive, so we were able to afford one cabinet that the teachers could use to inform students what they should be wearing if they're working on electric vehicles to be safe. Medical assisting, the third written part of the application was submitted. We had a soft inspection marked seventh. There were a few issues that we had to correct and we have done that. It was taken care of by the city over our break last week. The GEF is coordinating equipment donations for medical assisting and LEHI. Students in electrical carpentry are doing the work in the space. They're painting, they redid the ceiling, they're putting in electrical outlets, and they're building cabinetry in the space. Once we put in the part V application, it set off $35,000 in funding. So we were able to get some furniture. We got a microscope cabinet today that plugs in and it has ports for every microscope because they're electronically based. We are having a virtual PAC meeting May 22nd, a week before our in-person state inspection, which is on May 29. As part of the Ruth Pino storage unit for carpentry, the carpentry instructor brought the students and started them from the beginning of the process. So they went up to the building inspector and started it as if they were all their own contractors and learned the process from the beginning. They redid the ceiling. They painted. And they're at the point where we're going to install cabinetry, I think, this week and next week. And exam table suites, as it were. This is our enrollment, which is growing. If you see the bottom column.
Wait, was there a, Brenda, I was behind you. Just cue me when I want to change the slides because I was going to see something working down here.
That's, sorry, I'm looking for my, that's the carpentry students and they, they're replacing the ceiling tiles. So you can see them with their helmets and covered with the PPE and gloves.
This is the room that a long time ago was a cooking class, isn't it?
Yes.
And then became a storage closet for everything under the sun, doing lots of IT stuff. But then just recently, earlier this year rather, demolition came in, and, I mean, students, right? It's demolition.
Yep.
In terms of removing sinks and cabinets and all sorts of things and then on the pretty big.
They're also working on the floor tiles, as you see. In the next slide, you can see they're painting, doing the walls. Some of the, there was gas. Two gas stoves had to be capped, the plumbing had to be capped. But the unique thing about it, having that culinary space, there were many sinks. And the little exam table suites come with an exam table, cabinetry, and a sink. So we're just repurposing those spaces with the sink. So there'll be three full exam table settings including a stool, like compartments for the students to work. There'll also be another space across the room for lab work. It's all exclusive space. And then the middle, it's a big one. And the middle will be that classroom space with tables that can be moved depending on what they're working on. For the enrollment, it has been since 2020, it's been increasing. Next year, we have 151 eighth graders coming in. I don't have the numbers for the other, the last column because once you have a fifth program in vocational education, it requires a director, which is myself, and it also requires an exploratory experience where the eighth graders or the new students come in for 13 days and they experience every single shop. We also, so they can make more informed decisions, know a little bit of what their instructors might be, and figure out with a more, even though we do outreach at O'Malley, we go over there, they come over here for tours, it's not the same as having that immersive 13-day experience where they can really look at what's going on. Once they choose, that's the half year. And then in January, we'll be doing, if we need to, the lottery if the programs are filled, which is what we'll be doing at this point in the year. And that's like, so our work-study placements. We have a list of partners in carpentry. We currently have three students placed in auto five. Advanced manufacturing, there's two, and electrical, there's five students. I want to call out two of them, Gortons of Gloucester. I've been working really hard with them over two years because they're a union shop. So they would be a closed shop. Their union didn't want to hire our students because they were non-union. Not many students are union in high school. So they worked, once the contract was renegotiated, they renegotiated that they could take on students. And there's one now, and it looks like he's a senior and it looks like he's going to stay with them. The other one is applied materials. They have a 100-hour internship available for students. We had three students last year, one was vocational, and we have one vocational student in there this year. He's going to move on to being, working for an electric company, but he went through the whole experience and got a lot out of it. We want to also expand these partners, so anyone, if you're looking for workers, we have, we have been growing. So we have our sophomore to junior year, we have a lot more students and they're a lot, they have a lot more bigger, greater skillsets that we can get them out to work. So the two new initiatives for medical assisting, it increases the offerings to buy programs. Ours, we made ours unique. We added the J ROTC. And we didn't add it as a recruitment, we added it as a soft skills builder. So the students are required after every 13 days to do a Google slide presentation about their experience because they're not going to remember from September what happened, or in January what happened in September. And then at the end, they can polish that presentation and present what shop they chose and why. So that ROTC piece is a leadership combined with soft skills piece. So they'll have six spots and they'll also get a little bit of ROTC. We have a three-year trajectory for the health industry in these high demand careers. Part of the health industry and the medical assisting requires 161 clinical hours. So I'm working with LEHI now with an agreement and I'm trying to set up placements. So when the students are ready, they can have a manual placement for the requirements of the program. Clinical hours are part of the requirement to get your medical assistant license, which they can do once they've completed the requirements successfully for the program. They can go right from school to work. They can also go from school to college to RN and move forward as well. Part of that kicks off the exploratory. So I said 100 students when I made the slide, but we have 151. And that's approximately almost half the freshman class is going to be going through each program. We want to increase our non-traditional students, so females in construction trades, for example, NRLs, and increase the awareness for them to make more informed choices. The Gloucester Education Foundation has been phenomenal in this kickstarting of the medical assisting program. They funded the medical assisting instructor. They'll be doing 50% funding as the years move forward for a three-year total. We have consumable materials, a grant with $106,000 for the consumables. Also, they orchestrated the Lion Law funding, which is for one of our auto instructors. That program has doubled in size, always the biggest draw. The carpentry donation they orchestrated for the storage unit, the CVTE sponsor initiative, which provides T-shirt uniforms, helps us. One of the ways that it helps us is that next week we have our CVTE showcase and students will be getting cash awards, one student for every program for excellent work and portfolio work that they'll be presenting next week. And they've also supported us with our program advisory committee for the medical assisting.
Really deeply appreciate the leadership and partnership that Gloucester State Foundation has put forward on CVTE. It's really grown quite a bit. A few years ago, the main area that they supported was the Lion Law partnership. But it's really grown the past 15 years and it has been crucial in many areas, particularly on getting medical. So just appreciate Emily Siegel, her partnership with us, and of course, all the folks behind GEF. Tremendous.
The community as well.
Yeah.
Every, everyone, everyone. No, really, it's phenomenal. Gloucester, that's what it's all about. One thing that was added today was, this year, we had a marina day. We don't have a marina shop, but the automotive shop has transferable skills for the marinas who really need help. So from what I understand, there's two students already at the Cape Bay Marina working. Students have gone over to the St. Harbor Coals over in Salem and are interested in summer work. Then on Tuesday, they go into Fred Nian's Yacht Yard, which is, it's a working yacht yard. So they're looking for electricians and carpenters to work on the boats directly versus that customer service piece that the Cape Bay Marina and St. Harbor Marina would have. So this is going to be an annual event and we're trying to, Gloucester Marina was there as well. Brown's Yacht Yard, we had Mass Hire there. The harbor master brought his boat and the kids scrolled over it and had a great time. But it was, it was, it was a great win and if we can get two, two students at every marina, it'll be another pathway for all our kids. This is, again, the partnership with Gloucester Education Foundation. We, they have a fund and beauty partners have given for T-shirts, much like Kevin has on. The kids, every single shirt is a different color for each shop. And it also has its own set of community partners on the back, so it brings identity to the shop. And it also, kids can see the logos of the places that are potential workplace environments for them. The next, next slide. So these funds, there were rewards for the CVTE night. They can fund field trips, which we may need extra money for. We have free busing for field trips. However, one of the challenges is timing. So we have a Girls in Trades event in Boston and the buses aren't available until about 8:00, 8:30 in the morning and the event starts in Boston at 9:00. So we can get a bus chartered and get the kids in there in a timely manner so they don't miss any of the program. That's one of the things. Yep, so, and we have sponsor, sponsor logos. The next.
Yeah.
All right.
You can see, you see the screen.
There we see.
Oh, okay. There's a list of all sponsors.
Oh, all right. Oh, all right. Yep. So this is our list of sponsors. We want to grow this, spread the word. Also want to, we're going to have a unique problem where we're going to have a lot of well-skilled students that need jobs next year. So we want to try and grow those partnerships for people. And these are a lot of our industry partners and kids, the students that work at them. Next week, on May 8th, we have our showcase evening. One student from each shop will present their portfolio or work experience and how Gloucester High got them to that career job. We also recognize our most improved and our most outstanding students. So three students per shop are recognized with gift cards, cash, et cetera. It's a very nice thing. It's been changed to the lecture hall.
Oh, yeah.
Lecture hall, just remember, lecture hall. It's usually in the auditorium.
Right.
And what's?
Brenda, what'd you say, next Wednesday?
Thursday.
Thursday.
Eight, eight, at 5:30.
Yep. So first of all, thank you. You've done a great job since you've been here. This is sort of like a long time coming boost in the shop, getting a director and providing jobs that can't be outsourced overseas, you know, and many positions that need to be filled. But I had a quick question about the exploratory. So in 13 days, they really can't get too immersed, but what kind of things would they be doing?
So the state sets some standards for that and basically uses a safety component, a project component, and assessment component. So the assessment component is that Google slideshow that we talked about that ROTC is going to build the soft skills.
Yeah.
And so obviously, the safety will be abbreviated safety for the tools that they'll be using to complete that project. Ideally, it's something that they can take home, but for automotive, it's not going to be something that they can bring home. But they could bring home a skill. So for example, they could all check oil and then go home and check their parents' oil at home, for example. So it's, it's that type of thing. We want them to bring something out of it, students, whether it be physical or skilled base.
Brenda, can I ask something I learned this week from the medical assisting? We were looking at the medical assisting. Oh, too many of me right now. We learned that when I, you had researched through our neighbors what, you know, they're doing for the exploratory and finding that the, like, the eye exam is something that they would do potentially during exploratory in the medical assisting program. So you, we all know, bring our, our kids in for that eye exam. And so that is the kind of thing that might be a, you know, quick, easy thing for them to get started. But really, like, do you like having the, having this knowledge, working with somebody else, talking them through? That's right, the skill embed, some of the key things that if you like these, you'll also like the program. So each of the shops, the electrical shop design, the auto shop design, will have the kinds of things. Like, do you like collaborating with other people on a project to, you know, change a tire? That kind of thing, right? It, it will have some of the key things you're going to do that are harder as you do more better embedded. So finding like those kind of activities. So I just learned this week about a medical assisting through Brenda, what that might look like as we were interviewing candidates for that position this week. But that's another example, right?
Just one final question. So just a clarification with people. So from September to the end of the calendar year, they'll do this 13-week, 13-day rotation.
No, it's going to run from September to January.
June, it turns through June.
It will be divided between the, it'll be the first two terms.
Okay.
So it'll be halfway mark.
Okay, so I'm just, if there aren't, if there are enough seats for the kids who want to be in those seats, they just get in? If they're too medical, it's larger system for each program. And then they usually say, I'd like, auto is my first choice, electric is my second choice. Okay.
And that, that's the design of the final assessment. So that Google slide that you're doing for every single shop at the end, you know, the last day or the last few days, at the end, they'll say, this is my first, you know, they'll rearrange the slides, this is my first, second, third, and swap.
Great.
Let's just follow up. Brenda, so let's take the automotive program, really popular. Is there a chance that if it's full and we go to the lottery, these kids have auto for the first choice, but might not get into that program? Safe to say?
It might happen.
Because of the lottery.
It just depends on the broads. And auto is very, very popular.
Yeah, right.
As well.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, I, I can't say that that wouldn't happen. We've been pretty good so far.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But we have 151 students. So I can't eliminate that possibility. But most students get their first choice. I can kind of see it happening with the system.
I can, but that's kind of where I'm drawing. I can probably see that happen. And I guess the flip side of that is, do we have kids, could it be possible for a kid that doesn't really want to be in that program? Ends up in that program?
That does happen. That, that was this year. So automotive was 14, it was not a waiting list. There were 14 students that wanted to go to automotive.
Yeah.
However, we had the spots in other shops.
Yeah.
And the students are given a choice to enter the program per se. And they can choose to enter the program or not. They can say, well, I don't want that shop, I'm not doing vocational.
Sure.
Or they can, so it's only a waiting list if you have too many students and not enough spots at that.
And they could, they reapply the next year, say it's a flash, for the extent. Let me try it again.
Um, so I will say yes and no. We have, we have, we take, if there's a unique circumstance, then we try to address that circumstance. So there's students that have moved here and said, listen, I work at my dad's garage and I have, so I let them, the instructors vet them and decide what level they would be put in. But it would be increasingly difficult with the freshman exploratory because now you've got 151 and next year 150.
Right.
So it's going to be kind of, yeah. We'll, we'll be feeling growing pains.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But the other part of it, Brenda has just put on people's agenda, is we can expand the offerings in the exploratory to include things other than full Chapter 74 spots. So in other words, we could add, just like we've added this J ROTC leadership and soft skills component.
Yeah.
We could potentially find opportunities next year to add, I don't want to speculate because people start thinking about it, but some other say elective kind of thing, we might be able to add it to the exploratory, right? So that expands the, kind of the students who could be involved in the exploratory. It doesn't expand access to the eventual CVTE choice, but at least it does give more kids exposure to the, to at least the exploratory piece. And then, and then the other part is the potential to add additional Chapter 74 programs. I mean, sorry, Brenda, I don't want to bet you on that. It's a big undertaking, as you all know.
Yeah.
But if, if things are successful in an exploratory and, and, you know, Brent, this is one of the ideas Brenda actually brought to the table, was this kind of a big way of expanding. Bring something in kind of as an elective, as part of the exploratory, it won't be a shot they could choose at the end, but it allows us some time to figure out if this could be a viable program in the future.
Yeah. Like, wasn't a gotcha question, it was more just like.
Well, they call, they call them pathways.
Yeah.
And we have existing programs that can be used as a pathway.
Yeah.
And rather than starting something completely new, which we could also do. And this is the first time we're doing the exploratory, certainly we have 150 people signed up. You may, that may change, it will probably change, change. Some kids might just say, hey, I'll give it a shot.
Yeah, Brenda, you know, there's so many great things going on in your area. It's amazing. I love the synergy with the different departments collaborating on like, you know, outfitting the medical system and all that stuff and just cross collaboration. It's just, you know, it's just, it's so beautiful. And the community involvement, you know, and Gorton's getting on board. Yeah, it's really exciting. And, and you know, I had a question about the EV component. And, and you mentioned the PPE and what is a PPE cabinet and what are the dangers involved that we're trying to mitigate?
So I am not an auto person.
Yeah.
I know a little. I know that you have.
EVs are pretty, pretty, you know, niche too.
You have to be fully outfitted and grounded.
Yes.
Once you're working. You have to be fully outfitted and grounded, once you're working on batteries, so they'd be wearing a full suit. And. Not all employers are equal. It will give the students the knowledge to know that they're safe working in that environment.
Yeah.
It's, you don't have to buy a suit for every student, they just have to know what entails. That suit, so that's kind of where I'm going.
And get practical experience using the suits?
Well, they would probably be more of a demonstrative thing, they, you know, the teachers would say, listen, this is the footwear.
Yeah.
This is the, these are the, these are the, these are the different characteristics of footwear you would need to have to be safe. You know, this needs to be grounded, this suit has to be made of X Y Z material. In order for you to be safe, you have to have a certain covering over your head, like, for welding, for example, you'd have. You know, the, the shield, for example. So it would be, it would be akin to, in welding, if you couldn't afford everybody, student to wear a shield. You would just say, listen, if you're welding, you need to have the shield. Your eyes, etc. So that's the purpose of it, it was thirty-six hundred dollars. The cabinet, so.
And the cabinet just houses the equipment?
Yeah, it houses that, that per, personal protective equipment, yeah.
Reminds me of a lot of like, you know, Starell, you know, getting P P E with the medical assistant, I'm sure there's probably gonna be silver, similar thing with that.
Yes. Yeah.
Right, because there's certain protocol for, you know, reach.
Yeah.
Situation.
Yeah. I'd love to hear from you guys to tell us. Your experience a little bit.
What do you do? What have you done?
Alright, well, freshman year was a lot of the basics, getting safety stuff down, and practicing making simple circuits. Then sophomore year, we were down in carpentry a bit. That's when we actually took care of the shaper, as this was mentioned earlier. And this year, again, down carpentry, where I personally worked on the table saw. And currently, we are down working medical assistants.
Were you part of the advanced manufacturing machine installation?
No, those were, that was the.
The years before.
Those years.
What about, uh, doing residential work in that half house, have you done some of that?
Yes, I've done a bit of that. Medical assistants came along, that, in, right.
Right, the commercial piece, but, next up?
This is. Yes, as a career, for sure. I do.
Yeah, I'm a took the initiative to go down to the I V E W open house.
Yes, which normally our instructor, I'm sure that one would take us there and the entire class there in the van, but. This year, the open house occurred during the Gloucester educators' strike. So me, my brother, and another classmate of ours, just went ourselves.
Great.
Alright, no more questions, go.
Just, uh, do we have any numbers on how many graduates go into the trades? Currently?
The numbers are, uh, collected by the state. And the categories are. Um, did they work in a related trade, did they go into high, did they go into college, that type? They're more generic, they're not specific that this amount of students, uh, went into, you know. Out of ten electrical students, these many went into electrical.
Right.
So one of the, one of the conditions. When I came here, was that that junior and senior, uh, student group was very light. So, for example, the numbers are, are kind of, uh. There weren't that many students, so it looks like there weren't that many placements. Now, that, that, we have a new problem, we have. We're gonna have too many students in some of the shops, so we need to get them out on work. Which is a good problem. That's, that's where, that was the goal, to have this issue, as a, this challenge, I should call it. And we're also, um, thinking about a student that maybe took cabinetry for two years. Why don't you now, and there's a student that's doing this next year. She's gonna take, uh, third, uh, third level carpentry. She's decided that's her career, so we're trying to backfill and retain at the same time. But the data was not that specific.
Sure.
Yes. I, I have to call out electricals being one of the strongest programs, because they have. Uh, five placements out. Auto has five placements out, but auto has twice as many kids given to instructors. So the numbers are kind of deceiving, you kind of have to look at it through the, the whole, you know, how many students are there to give them. And that's, auto doesn't have that many seniors to put up yet, but next year, they're gonna have a lot.
They will, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's grow, it's growing incrementally, yes.
Excellent.
And then James, we, the, we, the, we capture data as well, which has something to do with our students, the next.
That's right, yeah, and I can include this year, you know, that'll be included in the presentation that I do. With you all, um, later, you know, about where kids are going, if they're, really the workforce are going into, uh, you know, job training, all things, well, it's the colleges that are, that, that, that. And we can even, Brenda, provide this, that data from the state's collection.
Yeah.
And those are specific, Jeremy, as you're looking for, we could provide that at the same time, we need that. You won't need to be there for that, Brenda, but I will take it from you.
I put it in all, it's there.
Yeah.
Just don't be extravagant, yeah.
Great, thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, of course. So I'm having that, I also have a son Dwight, senior, I was an auto shop graduate here, I'm a mechanic now. Um, the program's been great for them, I've been on the committee for four years now, attending all the meetings. And the opportunities here, when the kids were gonna go to, getting out of middle school, going to high school, a lot of people said, are you gonna send them away to a tech school? No, we haven't. And it's been great for them. Because they get the classes, not a lot of times back before, they're vocational students, they were just put through the vocational program, not a lot of education. He was an honor Spanish. Had great history classes here. The kids have done so much more, and they've come out as great citizens, and they're working. Going, coming in, my oldest, he started over this summer, had a work program, he's in it all this year. He can go on to become a journeyman, or they can work their way, way through college education, work during the day and pay for it. While they go through, get that extra to pay, they don't have to just be electricians, they can be electrical engineers, and they can build on that. You're covering all the basics. Been so great, I want to.
Thank you.
I wanted that, Kevin, and I will post it later.
Tremendous to hear from a parent, you know, also one who's been through the program itself. Um, this is what we're hoping for, this is what we've been built, you know, and it's been this way for, as you know, and your experience is really strange. Generational growth. Yeah, yeah, really, they're, they're a good time to instill. And I will say, you know, um, we've set up purposely strengthen it and build it and grow it over the last four, four or five years, you know, and. I've had a lot of support from the committee, from the mayor, of course, from, um, from Principal Cook. Um, and, and our, and our, and our, you know, fantastic staff, and of course Brenda as well. And also, that's growing outside partners, or gaining outside partner, having opportunity with the students. Um, which is, as you described, can create many, many opportunities. And that's, that's what we're trying to do, at the point of, of, so. Could not say anything better than yourself, sir, and I really appreciate all the, all the leadership and support, for me folks, thank you.
Thank you, thank, the community is great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We're gonna pause for a few moments while we deal with some technical difficulties, and hope we can get things, uh, working properly.
Um, so we will resume our meeting, um. And we will, uh, we are going to take the Gloucester High School Student Advisory Council members, um, out of the ward. As, you know, there's a lot going on in the seniors fight this time of year. So introduce yourselves and.
Uh, good evening, for those of you who don't know us, I'm Jane, this is Taya. We're seniors at G H S on executive board. Uh, we have several announcements for you, so I'll let Taya start.
I'm Taz, inside, so first thing we have is term three report cards, term three ended on April fifteenth, and today, report cards were released. Um, as we know, N H S, yes, we know, N H S members turned in the final tutoring and service hours. Have that stress off our shoulders finally. Um, exams by literacy test results are trickling in. The test consists of four parts, reading, writing, listening, and speaking. Additionally, next week, and long week, many G H S students will be taking A P exams. Um, Duncan Truck, a few weeks ago, Assistant Principal Allison Ellis entered G H S into a contest. G H S won, and was visited by the Duncan Truck, which gave out five dollar gift cards and samples, while they're in refreshers. For the health fair today, in the field house, several G H S clubs and organizations had a health fair. During lunch, E block and F block, all students had the opportunity to attend the fair. Learn about the organizations and participate in activities, it was really fun, we got to make like slime, there was a bunch of tables, and like a photo booth, there was like, it was a good time, I liked it. For sports, as spring sports continue, several teams have organized fundraisers. Girls Across recently hosted a successful restaurant night. Boys Lax has an upcoming restaurant night as well at the Saltwater Grill on May seventh. And the tennis team is hosting a plant stand on Saturday, May third. For the photo contest, four G H S students have had their work selected from over six hundred submissions for their annual, annual Hunts High School photo contest and exhibit. The gallery opening, the galleries opening and, and awards will be held this Sunday, May fourth, from two to four. The work will be displayed up through Memorial Day. And that's the rest of it.
Um, so my first announcement is from DECA. Three G H S students are currently at the International DECA Conference, I C B C in Orlando, Florida. The G H S community is eagerly waiting to hear the results. Um, next is about tomorrow's field trip to the North End. So tomorrow, juniors and seniors who take Italian will be going on a field trip to Boston's North End, where they will have the opportunity. Opportunity to explore with their friends and peers. Um, and then in a couple weeks, the freshmen and sophomores will have their own North End field trip. Um, also tomorrow is decision day, May first is the national decision day for colleges. So all the seniors are finalizing our college decisions and enrolling before the deadline. Um, also for seniors, the last week of school is coming up, May twelfth through fifteenth. Um, so we have a spirit week coming up. On Friday, May ninth, we will be dressing in our Fiesta whites. On Monday, we will be bringing anything but a backpack. On Tuesday, we will be wearing white lies t-shirts. On Wednesday, we will be wrapping our college works for decision day, and on Thursday, we will be wearing our class color, which is red, for the senior parade and picnic. Um, additionally, as we transition into May, we have many exciting events coming up, including junior event, which is May second, this Friday. Um, senior prom, which is May twenty-second, senior banquet on May twenty-eighth, and academic recognition night on May twenty. Um, as mentioned, this Friday, May second, is junior event at Ipswich Country Club. And one key detail is that afterwards, there'll be an ice cream truck for all attendees. Um, also, today during homeroom, we held elections for N H S and E Board, that's us, executive board, and the results are in. For N H S, we have President Jefferson de Carmel, Vice President Dylan Rochford, Secretary Lyle Cunningham, and historian Esme Saru. For E Board, we have President Martina Cracchiolo, Vice President Keegan Jewell, Secretary Sophia Farah, and Treasurer Jessica Harvey. Um, and then finally, on behalf of both Taya and myself, as well as Dylan, Ivana, and Jordan, who can't be here tonight. We'd like to thank the school committee meeting, the school committee for hosting us throughout the year to provide updates for G H S. We are grateful to have been a part of these meetings, and it was truly a worthwhile experience for all five of us. We're excited to officially pass on the responsibility to next year's. Thank you.
Big doors of having the president, and just the excitement that you bring, um, throughout everything going on in Gloucester High School, it's good for the community without anything going on, and. We'll see you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next item of business, oh, yes, next item of business is oral communications. Um. Oral communications, the public still have the opportunity at every regular school committee meeting to be heard under oral communications. Communication shall allow any resident who has requests or complaint of any nature to the school committee business, with every consent. State their problem in that debate, and the medical, for the practice committee. Items that are on the agenda, members of this public may address the committee with permission at the chair. Person speaking under oral communication shall be limited to three minutes each, and shall submit a copy of their prepared communication to the reporting secretary. Um, I just want to say a couple of things ahead, um, we clearly have, you know, a lot of people here, and, uh, and present. Forty, forty online, um. So, uh, we're gonna be pretty strict with the time limit, we're gonna ring a bell at two minutes and forty-five seconds. Um, which means you've got fifteen seconds to wrap up. Um, I also want to state that we, on our agenda, we are taking, um, having a budget presentation for the budget we will send to. Our mayor, or, uh, well, not to our mayor, sorry, to, um, for, for public hearing, which will happen, um, uh, in a couple weeks, and. Um, in that, it will, there's a lot of information on special education, and I know that's a concern or a topic out there in the community and among. A lot of people, so I hope people stay around to hear the details, and we're at, in terms of how that. Um, is progressing, in terms of discussions, and in terms of, um, that being part of our policy statement, just reflected through our budget and investments. Okay.
Well, Desmond, I am a special education program teacher over at West Parish. And I'm here to represent the Union of Gloucester Educators. Throughout this, sorry. Throughout the spring of twenty twenty-five, the leadership of Gloucester Public Schools. Have pushed forward a drastic changes to the delivery of special education services within our district. While a move towards a model of co-teaching, coupled with many additional changes to special education, may be admirable goals. The current plan will not serve our students or our districts. The implementation of these proposed changes has moved at a blistering pace, without taking the time to properly build the foundation for such a plan. Resources will be shifted around our schools, rather than proper investment for staffing and other key areas. The concerns of Gloucester's educators have not been given proper weight. And we, the undersigned educators, parents, and community members, ask the school committee and district leadership to meet the following needs as part of this massive shift within the Gloucester Public Schools. Delay in the implementation of a district-wide co-teaching model. We, as a district, have not dedicated sufficient time or resources to building the foundations necessary. To ensure that a co-teaching model would be successful. Moving forward without doing so will not only create unnecessary confusion and chaos. But will likely undermine many of the positive aspects that have been developed within our schools. Conduct an internal audit of current special education programs with educators. An internal audit of current special education service programs, uh, education programs, that includes educator input. Is critical towards improving services for students with disabilities. This audit must include special educators, E S Ps, counselors, service providers, etc. Together, we should access the definition, structure, effectiveness, and staffing of existing and developing programs. Key outcomes of this audit are clear program, clear program definitions, as well as clear entrance and exit criteria for each program. The audit will also guide decisions around fully staffing and implementing a continuum of special education programs within the district, K to twelve. Well-defined and appropriately staffed programs with qualified special educators. Well-defined and appropriately staffed programs with qualified special educators, paraprofessionals, and service providers will, number one, reduce the need for out-of-district placements. Two, reduce edu- educationally interrupted behaviors. Three, improve vehicle, vertical alignment. Am I out of time? Fifteen seconds. Oh, who's coming up next? Allow for more intention planning and professional development to co-teaching models. And number five, will retain existing staff and attract highly qualified teachers. Take concrete steps to ensure buy-in from the Gloucester Public School educators. The concerns of actual teachers within the Gloucester Public Schools have largely been ignored. District leadership must make genuine efforts to treat student-facing educators as experts and partners rather than causing the machine.
Thank you.
Hi.
Christine Travers.
Yeah. I'm Christine Travers. Um, I am a Gloucester resident. I reside at twenty-five August Road and am a Gloucester educator. Um, it's naive to treat a shift to co-teaching as something which can be taught in a two-hour professional development session like the one scheduled for May sixth. Moving educators, special educators, classroom teachers, paraprofessionals into unfamiliar roles without sufficient training is a recipe for failure, both for students and for staff. Rehire tier-two interventions and behavior supports until the proper foundations have been built for a shift to a co-teaching model. It's essential that a shift in the special education model within Gloucester Public Schools be done in a thoughtful manner, which continues to support current students while changes are made. As part of that aim, sufficient tier-two supports such as valuable paraprofessionals must be rehired to support our classrooms and students. We need commitments from the superintendent and the special education director to treat educators with a renewed level of respect. The rhetoric and tone and of condescension from Gloucester Public Schools administration needs to change. The concerns raised by educators have been consistently diminished, dismissed, and responded to with insulting language and quips. Gloucester Public Schools educators, many of whom with decades of experience in the classroom, are best positioned to partner with district leaders to ensure that changes are made in a responsible and effective way. Their voice needs to be given proper weight. Thank you.
My name is Beth Schaffner. I'm a second grade teacher at West Parish and a Gloucester resident, eight amount pleasant enough. Um, I'm speaking, uh, tonight to address our concerns around the co-teaching model. I want to be clear that we don't disagree with the model, just with the timeline for implementation. Thinking back to adopting wit and wisdom, it was a process to select curriculums to pilot, a whole year spent piloting, meeting, collaborating, getting teacher input, and then substantial training for teachers and a few years spent rolling it out at each grade level. And this was just for a single subject at the elementary school level. Now, with eight weeks left in the school year, this co-teaching vision that we're all expected to get on board with has yet to even be shared with the collective staff outside of what we've learned by attending school committee meetings and through our upcoming two-hour training through select staff before we implement this in the fall. We do understand there's a three-year rollout plan, but that also includes improving the new and existing special ed programs that are so desperately needed. I ask now, why not focus on these programs first while taking the necessary time to plan and collaborate and build the foundation of trust that we need in order to set us all up for success? It can't be a stretch to imagine how this rushed, closed-door planning for co-teaching has already caused unnecessary speculation, unrest, and anxiety within our staff, who is already stretched too thin, not to mention the potential for catastrophic hits to our budget with the dismantling of the Department of Education. Hasn't this year been turbulent enough? I'm not here to shoot down this vision. I just wish we could take a breath. I wish we could be included in this process instead of steamrolled. And I wish we could be on the same team as we move forward together towards a positive and successful future for Gloucester Public Schools. Thanks.
That's the question that we shared together. Do we get double time?
Can you give us an extra minute and a half?
We're trying to be, you know.
If we're negotiating.
We're covering the topic.
Give me one and a half.
My name is Jacqueline Valdesano. I live at fourteen Decatur Street, and I am speaking tonight as a proud kindergarten teacher at Plum Coe Elementary.
And I'm Samantha Blanchard. I live at seven Room and Avenue, Rockport, and I'm a preschool teacher here in Gloucester. The district plan for next year proposes reallocating two paraprofessionals from the preschool program and cutting one position. After cutting two positions last year, reallocating four paraprofessional positions from Plum Coe after having three cut previously. These positions are being reallocated to East Vats, West Parish, Beaman, and O'Malley, all who suffered cuts previously as well, when the budget cuts remained last year.
Our Paris are not simply numbers to us. Our Paris are vital members of our school communities who provide support to the students that they know and love. We understand that there is a need for more support at other schools, but blocking staff members from schools where they are happy and flopping them into new positions they are not interested in filling is not going to be the answer. We both sent anonymous surveys to our paraprofessionals because we wanted to hear from them. At Plum Coe, there are thirteen paraprofessionals currently. And I asked them the following. If you were one of the paraprofessionals asked to be reallocated, would you, A, be open to trying something new, despite which school you replaced? B, be open to trying a new position at a specific school mentioned? Or would you resign because you're not interested? Twelve out of thirteen paraprofessionals that took the survey said that they would resign. One paraprofessional responded that they would be open to trying a new position and then further specified that they were only interested at the elementary level. Plum Coe does not have any specialized programming to offer our students. We are a small, close-knit school that utilizes our Paris to ensure student success. If we lose these positions, we have, we have reduced our Paris staff from sixteen to nine in just two years. We have tried to rebound from the pandemic, from the rezoning, and from previous cuts, but this will be a big hit to the Plum Coe community. I understand that we are the last small school, but please remember that the number of classes per grade does not reflect class size and student-to-teacher ratio. My current class size is twenty-four. I just got a new student this week. Um, and the needs of the younger children, the younger students are more complex than ever before. By continuing to take our Paris, you are dismantling a system of tiered instruction that has been successful at identifying student needs and addressing them, the proper support. Less support means more students not getting the academic intervention that they need to decrease gaps in their learning, leading them to fall farther behind. Less support means less supervision and behavioral support, which is a major safety issue. Our students deserve to feel safe and supported from the familiar faces of the staff that have surrounded them regularly since kindergarten. It is disheartening that I keep holding on to hope that there will be positive change in the district, only to be disappointed at the actions taken. We can and should do better.
At the preschool, fourteen, paraprofessionals took a similar survey. Some responded that they would resign if they were reallocated to different positions. Or responded that they would give it a try despite the strain it would put on the professional development and personal commitments. You all heard me speak a few weeks ago, addressing the concerns I have with losing paraprofessional positions at the preschool while servicing a high-needs population. I'm concerned about the impact of the safety this loss will have, as well as supporting that academically and preparing our students for the elementary schools. I continue to seek the answer I proposed in the letter addressed to the school committee. In addition to personal meetings I've had with both Mr. Lummis and Mr. Jarvis, how is this decision that the preschool can continue to meet the needs of our students with three less paraprofessionals and Plum Coe without four for the next full year? We know that the challenges in the schools need to be addressed, but by reallocating Paris, you are going to ship the challenges instead of solving them. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rachel Rex, and I am a high school teacher in the science department here at Gloucester High School, and I'm also the proud co-president of the Union of Gloucester Educators. I live at sixteen Al New Avenue in Beverly. I'm here tonight to express the growing concern among educators regarding the significant and fast-moving changes being implemented in our sped programming. It's been mentioned earlier. Despite attending meetings, requesting follow-up conversations, and seeking clarity at multiple points, educators have been met largely with vague and inconsistent responses. One question remains unanswered. Our professional, I'm sorry, our questions remain unanswered, and our professional insights have not been meaningfully acknowledged. This lack of transparency and collaboration is deeply troubling. We are particularly concerned about the swift shift towards a co-teaching model, the reallocation of staff, and the development of program descriptions with entrance and exit criteria, all of which directly impacts our students. These changes are being developed and implemented without clear communication, adequate input from those of us who work directly with these students every day, or a thoughtful transition plan that considers the diverse needs of our learners. Educators are not being listened to, nor are we being respected as vital partners in this process. Let me be clear. We educators are eager and willing to collaborate with administration to design and implement systems that best serve our special education students as well as our general education students. But collaboration requires more than information sessions, singular two-hour professional development and surface-level input. It requires a genuine seat at the table, mutual respect, and a commitment to shared decision-making. We urge administration and our school committee to engage more conscientiously with educators moving forward. We all share the same goal, to provide the highest quality education for every single student in the district of Gloucester. Let's work together to make this happen with integrity, transparency, and trust.
Anybody else that would like to speak? There's no, no hands raised online.
Hi, for something completely different.
I think so.
Susanna Altenborg. Um, we designed boats at Gloucester, but her husband went through this system many, many decades ago. As a kid at seven, eight years of age, he was done with long as four job learned. Saw people learning how to build boats. He saw people design boats. And I heard of him back in the old country in the late seventies. Um, we had only fifteen years together, but we did sixty projects. And part of that project cycle was looking at our fishing fleet in town as direct bearing on budgets. This industry here, as it flows today, is stuck in the late nineteen eighties, early nineteen nineties, not because anybody's stupid, but because of federal plants up on the hill, all the way to Silver Spring, Maryland, process industry in time. It takes four and five pages. The mayor has his, of his office. I don't expect him to ever read this off, but he asked for the record to describe how this industry has been damaged. And it matters because our harbor plans do not integrate thirty-one years of bad federal practices. If anybody wants to have a flaming red shirt, some nasty language about the deep state, this would be it, but we don't use this language in Massachusetts, at least not I. I think we can do better, and one way to do better is to keep an eye on our harbor plan. Why does it matter? Our current hub event never once mentions any of these thirty-one years, federal code, map, or anything. We did collect local signatures, fifty. Not just my own imagination. And it seems that pieces like this, dumbass city staffers and outside consultants, completely ignore the needs of this industry, the needs of the school system, the next generations, to produce a cycle of harbor plants. Why do none of Gloucester municipal harbor plants ever support a sustainable twenty-first century fishing fleet? Why doesn't any of this matter? Again, drop space tax, great. But also, what happens to the next generation? Because this industry out here, as I said, is stuck thirty-seven years back. And the Gulf of Maine alone has forty-five hundred boats that need to be replaced with modern low-carbon devices. Somebody has to build them. Somebody has to learn how to build them. And so for I foresee too, we've emphasized over fifteen, fourteen years, fourteen and a half years ago, marine industrial wrote. Okay, so Templeton High School, because as we did proof here in Gloucester, we can, oh, this was a boat for the Navy. Thirty-nine foot long, we built it from scratch. Gloucester High School registered it. This was covered in times elsewhere. And the idea to not see any of this feedback reflected in our harbor plan has not been discussed at the city council of Mountford. I keep bringing it up. I think maybe you folks might want to take a closer look at this. All these documents I'm sharing here are available from us as a PDF. I think she knows what to find. And I hope you take it seriously because I think next generation has an interest in seeing that their ocean-centered future is not denied as a matter of course, because some harbor planners from who knows where does not understand that twenty-five age of federal code is what it took plan of this message. It's for real. Not in my mind, not in your imagination, not in my thinking. It is federal, state, and regional code, not clean. This harbor plan does not recognize its existence as toxic. It damages our city budget. It damages our reputation. The Navy hasn't let it down with a warship in seven, eight years, probably for a moment. We got to stop that nonsense. And the city, the school committee has a role to play with the influence for the next generations of ocean center respect. Thank you for your patience. And I just pay my tax. We have no questions. Thank you. Thank you for your patience.
Uh, that concludes our comments. Uh, the next item of business is the consent agenda. If they have any items they would like to remove from. The consent agenda as. All papers, AI. Um, next item of business is deliberations on education issues. Uh, we'll start with the superintendent.
Okay, folks, so, um, just, I'll start off with, uh, stuff quick. I'll circle around to the schools, our schools. And then I will have Michael Tell's and Angel Duncan, Sean Goulart, present about, uh, reading, writing in the, um, at Gloucester High School. Just as the agenda. Um, so pull up the presentation, share it. So. As we say in Gloucester schools, everyday matters, everybody belongs, every student. So, uh, in terms of previous updates, so we are shockingly, but, um, beginning, the end of the year. Beginning, the end of the year, celebrations, traditions, performance, uh, performances and other things. Uh, these veterans has it scheduled out, important dates now in school. And you can see some of them here at Students Art Festival. First of all, Gloucester's Art Festival is happening on May seventeenth at O'Malley. Okay, it's a new venue for the annual, uh, Arts Festival. And that's going to be, um, just tremendous, it always is, tremendous exhibition of student art around our, our schools. Um, so very excited for that to happen in a couple of weeks. Um, there's a bread night at, at, at East Veterans. Yes, this is their second. This is the second year. I think it's the third year of the school, but okay, it's only the second. Okay, um, the concert coming up, fifth grade farewell, of course, uh, Field Day. Uh, West Parish update, so they had local author Mark Parisi visit the school. And here he is visiting with the, with the, with the fourth graders. Uh, the preschool has had lots of, lots of going on here in a visit from a community impact unit, a cops and kids program. And, um, it was a little alarming. We, uh, all of a sudden heard a lot of sirens going off in the parking lot there, but it was just preschool kids pressing the siren alarm. It's pretty fun for them. Um, and they saw, spent a lot of time with the, with the SRO. There's, there's Michael Schole, officer Michael Schole, if there are other police officers there as well. Um, I do not press the siren, promise. I do not press the siren, promise. O'Malley, we're going to have a family forum. So we've had a couple of opportunities for folks to learn about things that are going on in O'Malley recently. Our last whole community meeting was one. We had a tremendous community conversation with the mayor was there, the chief, officer Petera, YMCA director, myself, Mike Titus, also folks from the Department of Health. Had about 120 people at the O'Malley Library and to learn about adolescents, the challenges that they face as adolescents and all the changes, but also the challenges that the community at school are facing supporting some of our young adolescents. And so the next step on this, in terms of connecting with families, is the family forum on Monday, May 5th, 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. in the library. Folks have asked if that will be also brought to us by Zoom. Though we are trying to really develop the community and that's best done in person. And so this opportunity happens not to be remote, like a lot of people in the room, necking and collaborating. Chance to respond to both highlight some of the great things that are happening in O'Malley, but also respond to these concerns. Gloucester High School updates, a few of them so great. The North Shore Resolution Center is partnering with the high school and with a grant from DESI, a HACR grant. And they are working on a mediation program, peer mediation program, so training for that. There are 11 Gloucesters, 22 Gloucester high school students are involved in the peer mediation training program. And then 11 of those students attended the peer mediation forum, the 20th Annual Peer Mediation Forum on April 17th. So it's before the break. Other updates here, the junior class with the attendance contest. They reduced their cognitive optimism by 5% during the month of March, which is excellent. Sophomore class came in second place. Junior class got a breakfast the day before break started. Last couple of things off to Pasquale.
So the principal switch for Gloucester High School is continuing. We are in the interview stages, so we're the first round of interviews. And we share much more beyond that because it's confidential at this point. But we're hopeful that midweek, next week, we'll be able to recommend finalists to the platform.
You're on track and on schedule.
Say how many? We can't say.
We can't say, yeah.
You can't say how many applicants you have?
We had 13 applicants.
And then over April break, the HR department and myself attended a job fair at Boston University. We had over 50 educators come to our table. We were giving out swag, bags, and brochures, and all kinds of goodies, candies, and things for people to come, attracted to our table, learn about Gloucester. We had a slideshow of our beautiful city, our schools, and talked to the rest of the region and encouraged many people to take a look at K-Ban for a nice place for employment. That day, we interviewed five candidates that were viable for open positions as a first round screening. And many resumes beyond just those five have been shared with principals for current open positions to follow up with, to see if they are good matches for our community. In addition, we've created a list of candidates that are interested in possibly coming to Gloucester, but who don't currently have a job in that area. But those open up from time to time, so we have a list of candidates. So it seems fruitful, seems fruitful. And we have another one next week. We will be going to Bridgewater State.
Any questions?
Ben, just real quick on the community form, a couple of people just talked to me. Families, family form, they are just residents of the community. So thanks, they opened to anybody.
Yeah, well, the O'Malley one really, public school families there. The community conversation was for the general public. But I'm, yeah, but really it's focused on families who are attending right now or maybe attending next year. So now. Yeah, Prince of Cook, Sean Goulart, Michael Tels. Can one of you show the presentation or should I? Amy, Amy will show it. There you go.
Ready to go. Thank you, Amy. All right, so I know for, at many meetings, I've been able to give different kinds of presentations on data that we have, different levels of data, and sort of the work of the teachers and staff at Gloucester High School to keep our students learning and growing and to accelerate improvements in the school. And tonight, to do this presentation, which is going to focus very specifically on reading and writing at Gloucester High School, I have with me Sean Goulart, the program leader of the Social Studies Department, and Michael Tels, the program leader of the English Department, to focus on the improvement efforts in each of those areas. And I'll say more about that when we get to their parts of the presentation. As always, Amy Pasquale also helped me in the presentation to look at it from district level. You'll hear a lot of alignment between things that are happening at middle school and elementary school, as well as between the Social Studies Department and the English Department to help our students improve in areas of reading and writing. So as you know, you've heard before, the district expectation is that 80% of our students meet or exceed expectations. That's a goal, right, across the district at all levels. And that our students are at 60 SGP level. The student growth percentile is 60 for our students. So for this report, the achievement data that we're using is MCAS data. I'll mention access data, which is for our English learners, and also STAR 360 data, which is the reading and math. Yesterday, we were doing reading done in all our schools, at all our levels. And again, that's something that started a couple of years ago, that that was brought to the high school. And you'll see some fruits of that. To understand the different levels of data, this is something that's particularly near and dear to me. And it's work that I will be continuing as I transition from the principalship into the classroom at Gloucester High School. And it's understanding the three levels of data. So oftentimes in meetings like this, we talk a lot about the satellite data. That's MCAS data, right? That's access testing data. It happens once a year, maybe twice a year. But once a year, and it gives us a big picture. And we can look at it across the school, across all our schools. We can look at students across time, and it gives a big, high overview. But to really start to work on interventions and to adjust our practices, we've got to look at some mapping data. That's where STAR 360 comes in. That's where we're assessing students along the way. That's where teachers' classroom assessments that build towards, formative assessments that build towards a summative assessment come into play. We map out a student's year, a student's progress to see individually and also collectively, are we on track? And we make adjustments. And then, through our professional learning communities that meet twice a week in smaller PLCs and once a week as a full department, we can look and share street data. These are the things we're noticing on the ground. How many students are engaged and paying attention to a particular lesson? When I did a mini lesson on thesis statements, because students' thesis statements weren't very strong, how did they respond to that, right? It's a very granular level of data that we use to make even smaller adjustments and to share with our colleagues, to get support from our colleagues, to offer support for our colleagues. So all of that data is really significant. To look at the satellite data first, we're going to be talking about the growth percentiles. So to remember, from previous presentations, low growth is in the 1 to 39 percentile. Moderate growth is 40 to 59. And high growth is what we're looking for, and that's 60 to 99. The reason we're here today, and this might have the fancy circles. Okay, good, all right. The reason we're here today is because our, although we've had growth, you'll see in the next slide, in many areas, our overall student growth percentile remains at 38, which is just below that middle threshold. Right, so we're looking, this year, we've made a lot of efforts to prioritize and accelerate the growth. I mean, some significant changes to improve that. In math, we're very close to meeting the district goal. That's why we're not talking about math. We're at 59, the district goal is 60. Percentage growth percentile, we're 1% away from high growth. And some of our subgroups do have high growth. So the urgency comes to make, to get into first the middle level of growth and then to high growth in these areas. All right. So there's some better news about the work we've been doing and that I've been presenting over many years in the next slide, where you can see that in many areas, we are making growth with some subgroups. Sort of growth first, if you go back, yeah. This to the achievement slide. So in the area of achievement, overall achievement, we've been making some growth. Particularly if you look at our lowest-performing students, we had an 8.6% change in increase, points rather, 8.6% points change, exceeding our target in that area. We've improved in some areas, but below the target for all of our students overall. And so you can see, you know, for our, yes, Hispanic and Latino students, you can see the path forward, exceeding our target. I can see some areas where we are improving, and we are improving overall, but not at the rate we want. And we're not getting the rate. That's really what we're here to talk about, is how to accelerate the rate of improvement. And our staff's been working very hard on that and doing some great things. You'll hear about in a minute. So the next slide shows a similar pattern. The earlier slide was achievement. This slide is the growth. Again, you see growth, but it's low growth, or typical growth. And we want to accelerate our rate of improvement at the school. So in the next slide, you can see a place where we did accelerate our growth. And that is, as you've heard before, but this is with our English learners on the access testing, where we made very significant growth in the testing last year. We just got our preliminary reports. I don't have overall data, but we're looking at individual students. We are still, we're not seeing the same rate of growth as last year. But it would be difficult to continue. But we're seeing a similar pattern of growth. And we'll say more about that in the future. Okay, so that's the satellite data. Now, now we're looking at the mapping data. This is what happens each year. We do this benchmark testing. And one of the interesting things we're now able to do, because we've been doing it long enough, this is the third year, is we can actually see, we're looking at how many, what percentage of our students are at or above benchmarks, right? That's a good indicator of who may be proficient on the MCAS and proficient in other tasks. So you can see that for our current ninth-grade students, that 51% of the students were at or above benchmarks in seventh grade. 40% were at or above benchmark in eighth grade. And 67% of the last testing, which was this winter, are at or above benchmark.
This is following the same cohorts.
So it's our current ninth-grade students over time. For our 10th-grade students, you can see a similar pattern. 41% of our students being at or above benchmarked in 40% last year and 67% this year. Now, it's a good time for me to pause and talk about the hard work of teachers, in this case, English teachers, are doing to get kids to buy into the benchmark testing more, right? Like how to incentivize it, how to encourage kids to take the long, you know, the time it actually needs. So some of this growth looks unbelievable, right? And but some of it, we know, is from the heart, the efforts to get students to take these kinds of things seriously. It's not a graduation requirement. High school kids will blow off some things, but they've come up with lots of great ways to get kids. One of the ways is simply to look at the time they're taking and to have kids redo when their time on the task is too low, right? And then some of it is also the learning that's happening. These changes that you're going to hear about in a minute, both in English and in social studies, have also led to. Our 11th-grade students, you'll see on the next slide, they didn't have it in ninth grade, their ninth-grade year here. They didn't have this testing. We hadn't moved it into the high school yet at that point. And so, but you could see a similar pattern of growth from 48% at or above benchmark to 68% at or above benchmark at the most recent testing this year. And the 12th grader story is a little bit different. I'll explain that. So our 12th graders, you'll see, although we don't have the same level of improvement in at or above benchmark, only 104 of our students tested. That's because, for example, in our AP Literature class, they have a test very soon. Michael, what's the date?
Yeah, oh, May 7th.
May 7th, right? Next week, May 7th. They lost time. I do this right earlier this year. So taking the time out for benchmark testing wasn't particularly wise. Their big test is the AP test, so making the choice to make sure they focus. So this year, the data will be a little anomalous. We hope to see the same level of growth from those students too in the years to come. But that's the 12th grade data. All right, and then, so I'm going to introduce Michael Tels here in a minute.
Just a quick question. I understand the satellite data is showing one thing. And then this is like tier two or whatever data.
Mapping, yeah.
What do you have?
Mapping, mapping.
Why are we seeing the growth other than the testing, right? People actually, kids actually taking the testing seriously and doing it. We're seeing growth there, but not on the satellite testing.
Well, it's complicated because we're not testing the same thing, right? So the reading comprehension, the start-through-60 day is just reading comprehension, right? It's not as long a test as the state, the exam cast test is. There might be, these are just some speculations about the difference.
I'm back up to that, and I have some, you know, I can add to that.
So, yeah, so they're different, they're somewhat different tests. And that's why it's so important to have multiple assessments to look at, right? Because even MCAS isn't telling the whole story. So we want to augment that with all the other things that we can do. And STAR 360 is one of them. And then you'll hear a little bit about some of the other ways along the way. So just to sort of frame what Michael will be talking about in a minute. So it's Michael Tels, is the program leader of the English Department. And the work that we've been doing together and then in the PLCs with all the English teachers has really been focused on, like I said, accelerating and consolidating some of the changes. So some of the professional development you've heard that we've been doing over the years, incorporating STAR 360 data and that mapping data, using PLC time to create common assessments and common planning. So teachers are teaching the same thing at the same time and can give feedback to each other about how it's going. It's a pretty big deal to pull all these pieces together to particularly this year, make the significant change of adding more common elements. So Michael's going to take you through the reading changes, the writing changes, and also the use of professional time. Let me try to follow.
Thank you for having both of us. And I just want to, just before I begin, I just want to frame what, I'm just going to walk you through some of the new initiatives that have been happening this year and things we're working on. But just to give you a framework, which kind of speaks to what James is talking about. You know, when we, in the English department, you know, we're always processing the data from the satellite level to the ground level. And we've narrowed things down to the certain, what we think are the main needs for students right now. And what those are, just to give you three of them, there's a lot. But what's driving a lot of these initiatives for us is we want to help students scaffold and be able to process long texts, which speaks to what we were just talking about with the MCAS, which expects them to read multiple long texts and have stamina and a working memory to, you know, process those and be able to respond to them. And that's a big leap for them. And it's a little different than the STAR 360, which has them read much more digestible bits. This is quite significant for some students to be faced with that much reading and to have to work their way through and exercise their working memories. That's a, that's a goal for us. Reading and synthesizing multiple texts on their way up to 10th grade is a big focus for us as well. Skill that we have, toughness we really need to work on. And finding better means of engaging students with more high-interest. reading material and also with more high interest prompts, which may sound like a small thing. But the way we answer or the way we ask students questions and the way that we present overarching questions that guide our units is essential, and it really can change the way a student feels uh pulled into and 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 feels motivated to write. So that's another thing. So as I'm going through, I might go quickly or I might get tangled up in things. Um you know, don't be afraid to read about. But uh that's why Fudge and I hang all this stuff. Um so yeah. So with uh reading initiatives, one of the most revolutionary things that we've been able to do in the ninth grade this year is that we've been able to implement common pacing with all of our teachers in ninth grade, meaning we've we do the same books at the same time, the same assessments. And that has allowed us to do a lot of really fine-tuned work um in PLCs, which I'll talk about more in the PLC uh slide, but because of um the the our ability to buy enough material through the gracious um the efforts of of administration, we were able to um buy that uh to get that material and keep ourselves on pace. And the plan is for next year, potentially to attempt where the uh classes have agreed upon a new revised scope and sequence um which will accommodate these new texts and even uh we've we're hoping to make uh even more um high interest texts uh that we revised it. And we will have a dedicated unit for MCAS prep uh coming. We've always done this, but it's it's um it's often we have chughorned into another unit. Now, the all of us, all of the instructors can um you know, in a coordinated way, focus on um our MCAS prep just before the MCAS. That's gonna be valuable. Um we have adopted common media active reading strategies. This is one of our attempts to help students scaffold long texts and also to put their working memory. These are things like um we call the signpost nodes, which all teachers have implemented, where um students uh they they keep track of significant moments in a novel. Um for instance, you know, what there's six discrete categories they look for, which are common to most narratives. And you know, like moments when a character uh has a a memory that's significant or a moment when their older character applies as a younger character. Something that repeats over and over again. Um and this has been, it's been really successfully employed by by all the teachers uh in ninth and going into tenth grade. Uh tenth grade is this strategy as well as some keys for literacy strategies. So I'm hoping that they're trained in to um to help with nonfiction texts that were signpost notes. Appropriate. Um we have been using uh new creative mind mapping activities. Um things like visual essays, uh things we call sketch notes, which are kind of a bridge between uh their note taking and the and an essay. And it's a way where they can um more creatively control how they develop ideas, how they're using their information to bridge their way to cycle. And they we found those to be incredibly engaging. And um and really immersive for the students to get involved in, and then they go through to write an essay. Um we're trying to, as I mentioned, provide them with exposure to multiple texts, increasing through tenth grade, uh transferring their knowledge from one text to another or comparing, testing the two. Often, the MCAS will ask students to say, um you know, uh I'm just trying to demonstrate an understanding of the main idea of one text and then select supporting details from another text to support that. And that was identified as a real area of need for students. That's the thing. Um we've been trying to develop, or we have built student-driven, common research projects involving uh the librarian, the school librarian, the techs, Eric, who's been integral at all stages of the research. And it's been invaluable and apt. And um and then of course, these are STAR three sixty results, so by this for growth. So that's um some of our reading initiatives. Okay, time for questions, or should I just?
I have a, I have a native question. You say high interest.
Yeah.
What do you mean by high interest?
Well, I think
With your kids.
Yeah, I mean, sometimes it's
How do you figure that out?
Um I think these are texts that um they either uh they it's complex or they are um they, yes, they should relate to, but it poses problems that they feel engaged with. Sometimes, it'd be surprising, like sometimes in older texts, if it's from but um but we're trying to find, um yeah, any texts that that we can relate to, they feel um have they have some stake in.
Do you survey the kids at all?
Well, we do, and we also, well, we compare, but we compare notes, like we might try um like turn some sort of short story. You'll see, it's just like that word, and you know, that kind of thing.
It's like piloting different attempts at things to find that this story has the things kids care a lot about. Problems they're going through. And as Michael said, it's awesome. Sometimes it's things we wouldn't think.
Don't know.
But it's an older thing, but the problem is like is relatable to a student now.
Yes, it's interesting. It does come down, it comes down to what that's the, what the problem is, and it's a problem that students are thinking about themselves, I think, you know. They can't, there's some breakthrough. Yes, it's unpredictable, but sometimes, you know, you have things that, really quickly, for instance, Jane Eyre. Um but these are, if you read that many AP students, um you wouldn't expect that novel with wrapped up, but something about it, you need to get some going. It's it's the issues that it brings up, the problems they can play to itself, as you're telling us. Yeah, something you never, you never know. So, you know, I mean, something to kids today.
Some more questions. So when you talk, just a question, um how do you work with differentiation if we're doing common pacing?
That, okay, to that, on my PLC slide, I did. We'll get there.
Yeah, just real quick, Michael, at no point do we, I mean, it sounds like collective reading. Everybody's reading the same thing, right? And at no time, there's there's not a model for it. It's kind of sprouting off that and finding really what they maybe something of a different interest that just because three hundred kids are reading a book, I mean, then all three hundred are gonna be interested in the book. Right, so is there, is there an opportunity for, is there a model where that can kind of be kind of vetted out a little bit where kids might, there could be alternatives for kids to read something that that might be a better fit for them, is that not?
It's also, I mean, we, because we want the assessments to have consistent, you know, we want them to be, um you know, we want to be able to care how it is doing. Um we can bring in supplemental material, like that's what we pass with all the time. Um some classes with more motivated students could do independent reading alongside the Yeah, that is something that we'd love to do. Right, so with with writing initiatives, we've been implementing um common writing assessments for ninth grade as well as tenth grade. Um the um in these try, we try to cover all modes of writing that the MCAS will feature, which is narrative, expository, informative, and argument, right? Um so that's in ninth and tenth grade. And then as we, they move into tenth grade, they get exposed more to uh multiple texts and try to kind of both. Um we've been coordinating our writing front language, and this is something that um this will also talk about. Some really focusing on on what kinds of words trigger students to write the most uh deepest responses, the most motivating responses. Um Mr. Clay, I think he just called him a task verb, so you're doing those and um and also uh you know, revising and and revisiting our rubric liners to make sure that using consistent vocabulary, that students know what we're talking about. Our our thesis, you know, this, it should be insightful, meaningful, debatable, and um and um last, last, that's maybe.
I got me in one second.
Yeah, yeah. Uh so for the task verbs, just to give you a sense, um we use identify, describe, draw a conclusion, define, explain, and develop an argument. A lot of our prompts will start with those types of phrases, just to kind of get the kids thinking about that.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And the last one, it just kind of covers what I I brought, sort of our our, that what really frames everything, our greatest areas. And then um last slide, uh this is just, um I think what's been one of the greatest sort of revolutionary things we've done this year is the result of our common pacing. Um in PLC, in our ninth grade PLC, we've been able to compare and interpret results of assessments like in real time. And sometimes with formative assessments, we can say, okay, that didn't work. You have a little adjustment, let's try it, we'll try it again. Um if there are, if, and this speaks to the differentiation, if there is a group of students, one of us or working on a skill. Other teachers have been able to pool their, you know, pool their resources and understanding of what's going on and find side this um at this level, whereas we'll try this on that level. We'll try, maybe we'll try flexible grouping, maybe we will, you know, maybe if you break them to us this way or that way. Um so and we can do that as we're pulling um and rewrite things for links here. So it's been incredibly helpful to to be able to meet um as we're doing it. Um in other, you know, other grade levels, we do the same thing, but it's not quite as in the moment, it's not as as um as Amelia, because you know, some of us may be doing different books at different times. You know, when you do this, but do you remember what you did at this moment? And I can't remember it. I know something was off with that. I want to check my notes, you know. So that's been an invaluable experience, both for um you know, for for us as teachers, but also for being able to make a little difference for students. So we've been able to revise and and review prompt language and coordinate that across classes, plan mini lessons and activities that target areas of need that sometimes will emerge. When you least expect them, like, oh, we've got this problem, we've got to deal with it. Let's put this out. Um also, we're able to plan and revise and upgrade a new scope and sequence for obvious teaching. That's been great. It's been a great experience.
Just to emphasize, the one small change of aligning the curriculum at ninth grade has allowed so much more collaboration and and quality among the staff that they're able to differentiate and make all those in-the-moment changes. I know Michael said that, but I, it it's just like a little change that made such a difference. And they're looking to do that in seventh grade and move it up. So it's tenth grade. I don't know what's
Tenth grade next year. Same thing in tenth grade next year and then eleventh grade.
Tenth grade, so they'll move it up along. Um so it's a small change. It was a, it was a small cost to the district, but it, I mean, hearing you talk about it, it was money very well spent. Um and to have more time for teachers to collaborate and use each other's expertise to differentiate and meet the needs of every student. I mean, I'm really happy to hear that how how effective it has been.
Yeah.
And I'm so happy that that we're
Oh, it's great. And then what I, what I keep thinking is that when a new teacher were dropped in, like say, in ninth grade, you'll see, they could, they would be supported all along the way, and they wouldn't be sort of flaring like, what did you do last year with this book at this time? You know, they would, we would be able to pull them right along. That's that's really important.
And another change is the collaboration with social studies. We get to hear about that.
Yes, yeah.
That was a segue. That's like, if I could just, yeah, so so just to frame that, sorry, you've got a question about Just wondering, just wondering about the PLCs, I mean, does this work, would this be able to work between, like, say, grade nine and grade ten, like having teachers collaborate, like for the, you know, interim, like transition? Or is it strictly, you know, the idea strictly be, you know, among, you know, certain grades, will teachers live in that grade?
It can happen, and some of that does happen in department manuals, which are once a week. Um it's hard when when often when one team is meeting, they'll see the other team on doing some of these.
Yeah, so it's, you know. But once a week, as Michael just said, once a week, they all meet.
Yeah.
Together, and so the ninth grade department gets to talk about where they're at with this. The tenth grade team can say what they're seeing, and those adjustments happen vertically every week.
Like long term, I'm thinking like long-term planning.
Yep, that's right. Yep. So that's part of it. Every week, there's that too, in addition to the two times with the focus. So it's a pretty good design. It's taken a minute to get there, but we're we're at that place. Um so another big change in addition to that is the evolution over the time that I've been principal of bringing the social studies into joint partnership as literacy um providers in the school. So there's, our students are getting twice a day, they're getting English. Yeah, we're getting reading and writing practice, once in an English class, once in a social studies class. And we've planted a lot of seeds along the way. You've heard of us, uh the training uh for uh the two column notes from Keys to Literacy. Social studies teachers also got that same training when that took place. Um rubric building has been happening. So all these things have been happening concurrently. And like um with uh the English department, social studies has really pulled those things together to like amplify and accelerate the growth which we're looking for in students. So so it's really amazing, and it says always happen, definitely wasn't the case in the past. To have the teachers from Sean, but all the department um really embrace them being not just content providers of history, but teaching English through uh social study, uh sorry, teaching, reading and writing through social study. So Sean's gonna talk to you about what that looks like.
Yeah, so um so first of all, thanks for having me as well. Um the social studies department is made up of seven general ed teachers. Then we have two special education teachers that co-teach with us. And then we have three ML staffers that are also in the classrooms and work with us and collaborate. Both in PLCs and our So we have a really, really good-sized group. We have a really strong group, a great capable group, and then a group that's super enthusiastic about this work. Which, if it weren't the case, I wouldn't say that. But we absolutely have a great group that wants to work with the English department and really are doing a good job coming together and doing that. Um and it's a shared responsibility, because there is no MCAS with social studies. So with the 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 obvious nature of reading and writing is both in social studies and in English. So we are doing a lot of the similar um things they're doing, we have the conversations, and we're working together to do that. Keys to Literacy is definitely one of them. So I think the first slide here is uh we're gonna go, we're gonna go reading first. Here we go. Uh so so um expanding on our professional development, we utilize uh the keys to literacy. So what we've been doing is we've been working on a couple of things from Keys to Literacy and looking to do the um the rollout of trying to do twenty things at once. So a focus we've been using, especially in ninth grade PLC, is the two column notes, where you're reading, you're actively reading, and you're taking notes, doing it. Um I think we all remember the time where you would read, look for the answer, the bold word, and then you'd find the answer and you write it down, which you're just kind of cherry picking and not really doing reading. So this is taking two column notes and actively reading and strengthening reading comprehension, but also teach you can check the notes, see where your thoughts are, and that kind of thing. So two column notes are really, really great, and the fact that English does as well, they're doing it twice as much, is really kind of what we're trying to build here. Um and then we're also doing reading, identifying main ideas of a passage, um reflecting the question in the answer, and then using evidence to support the answer. So it's not so much about just what's the key term, what's the definition? Back in the old days of Jeopardy, where it's just facts and facts and facts, but actually having them appended and also then being able to use it in a way that's meaningful, because we have developed essential questions as a department. So in our department, in the world history, we have ten essential questions that are broad enough that you can kind of plug in whatever, you know, whatever culture, whatever geography you're in. Um and then in US history, you have eleven essential questions. Same idea, you have a big broad question, um and then you kind of plug in whatever area of history you're talking about. And it's great, because the big broad question gets them to think critically, rather than just saying, what was John Rolfe's wife's name? Oh, God, right, like, it's more so like, name a group that had trouble asking their rights, right? And then all of a sudden, you have a question, and you can plug in American history, badly, many answers to, right? People have never asked for their rights, whether it's successful, how they're successful. Um so we're we're going to more of a big broad approach, and this work's been being done for the last couple of years. But this has not started this year. Um but I do think the food and the labor is gonna start being, we're building the stuff now to then have it be implemented. Some of it was implemented last year, some are already now, some are gonna be next year. But there's really a shift with both the social studies and English department that I'm excited about, and honestly, the whole department. Um we're pre-teaching vocabulary, um we're identifying difficult language, we're pre-teaching difficult language. In some areas, we're leveling language, right? Because not everyone has the same reading level, as we all know. So we're doing a lot of that work, which has been great. And um and then we're also reading very difficult primary sources. So I'm sure everyone knows, but ninth grade, they do US history one, right? So we're going back four Right, so we're going back four hundred years, having fourteen, fifty year olds read four hundred year old language, right? So having a fourteen year old read Declaration of Independence, sometimes we could break it down, sometimes with scaffolding or whatnot. But we do, um, pre-teach a lot of the words, um, and then we will go from there. So the primary sources that we use at a ninth grade level, it's kind of funny, but your ninth grade level reads in many ways di- more difficult. Uh, primary sources than your tenth grade can. Because when you have a kid, a person from Jamestown, who was writing things out phonetically, and then all of a sudden, you have tenth graders reading something from the sixties. Right, so it's very different level of language, so we work with them to kind of break down the text. Uh, and then we use our task verbs, so like identify the intended audience, primary source, define the role of the author in the work. Examine the point of view, make an argument, all our task verbs go with the, um, the readings of people. So we want them to actively read, and we want them to read to show understanding, rather than read to just answer the question. And we certainly don't want to play Jeopardy with them, how many people died at this battle? I mean, it's more important to know why the battle happened, like, how it was resolved or battled, than giving just facts that you would need on Jeopardy someday. So we're really making a shift, and it's a conscious effort that all of our department is doing. When I say all of our, I mean seventeen of us, generally, I'm talking about the two special ed, I'm talking about the two ML teachers. I mean, it's very, it's a very cohesive big group that works together in small PLCs and other departments.
Pretty good, is that good? Go to the next slide, yeah.
He's not done yet.
He's got it.
I didn't change his computer.
Yeah, oh, I have a different slideshow.
Um, so then the writing initiatives obviously go, you know, reading, writing obviously go together. So what we have been really doing in a lot of our work, both at the PLC level and the department level, is creating common assessments. And the common assessments are not only content, because when you take a ninth grade class, there are certain things you should know at the end of the class. Um, but also the writing assessments that go with it. So within that, it's a primary source analysis that could be in your midterm exam, or it could be a compare and contrast. And we're working on, again, doing better at, at less things, rather than trying to roll out a ton of things and not do a good job at it. So at the ninth grade level, we have really been focusing in on comparing and contrasting. Because, um, to do it well is not always that easy, like a shuffle comparison. It, to do it well is not very easy, if I say compare, the Jamestown sentence went with the poems, not gonna get super hysterical. But typically, what you could get was, I'm gonna tell you the story of Jamestown, and then next paragraph, I'm gonna tell you the story of Punter. That's not really comparing, that's just regurgitating two stories into different paragraphs. So we're working with them about breaking down, analyzing, finding the similarities, finding differences, what made them similar, giving them different observations and all that kind of stuff. So that's been a huge focus for the ninth graders, is comparing and contrasting, that's a focus we've been doing in our formative assessments, all the way up to the summative. Which is midterm, or whatever the writing, um, assignment is. So that's a big thing, is the common writing and the common content, um, assessment. So as of right now, all three grades, and eleven, have, um, a midterm exam that's now common, which will be rolled out next year. So all ninth graders take the exact same common portion of a midterm. And then they'll all take the exact same final exam, and then they will also all do a research paper. The research paper is also common, so it's, every teacher, no matter if you have Mr. Goulart, or Mr. Poole, or whoever you may have, you are taking those two tests and taking that right at the exam. And then we can actually have an opportunity to sit down and talk about the, and talk about feedback, talk about where the kids did well, where they could improve. And then maybe even like, was it a fair question, was that a fair, we can also kind of reflect on the assessment. So, that's something that we've been working on as a department, and I'm super proud of the group that I'm in. Um, because we have been not only doing it, but doing it systematically. It's not that one or two people that will arise whenever I bring it up, everyone is on board, and I couldn't ask for a better group to be with, so just wanted to shove that out. Uh, but also with the assessments comes common, um, common grading rubrics. So basically, not only having a common rubric that everybody uses, but also having, getting the same level of feedback. And we always try to use the same language, it's not lost points here, it's you gain points here, and this is where you can gain more points if you do this, this, and this. Um, so really, by the time eleventh grade rolls around, if you're in Mr. Francis's class, you should have seen that rubric for two years, the third year. You're not rolling into a new class with a new teacher who has a new rubric, you have to kind of learn that way of that teacher. This is the same language and a false process, probably three year process. So what we're building now is something that will follow these students for three years. Wait, are we good?
Okay.
Um, so that's some of the stuff we've been doing in terms of writing, also, like I said, we use the task verbs, I'm not gonna go over them again, unless you want me to. Um, but basically, we're.
Have a quiz at the end.
Yeah, we're working on, we're, we're focusing on pacing, make sure everyone covers. We're focusing on everyone using the same assessments, that way we can look at the student achievement, and then we can go over and across the hall, knock on Mike, tell us door, it was right across the hall, okay? Like, everybody's in the knock, and we can discuss where we're at, where they're at, and we can, and we can collaborate with the English department. So we're super, super excited about that, and then on top of that, not only are we focused on the skills that may be assessed in the MCAS, which would be great, because that's what, what we're here. Talking about, uh, strength and, is our scores and obviously our skills. But then on top of that is, we are working very closely with our, our librarian, Ms. Texera. Much like you guys are, we're doing research with, uh, Sam Texera, we've developed three grade levels again. Of common library lessons that all kids will do, all ninth graders. And she has a lesson that they'll work on, you're focused on ninth grade skills, tenth grade skills, eleventh grade skills. So, at the bare minimum, kids should be in this library, social studies, we should be in this library three times over three years. In the exact same structure that we have.
Something on lunch, it's so something that's come up at these meetings a little bit, have been, you know, sort of like, what are we doing about AI? And that sort of thing, that is incorporated in the ninth grade, um, lesson that Ms. Texera started this year. It's like some, that's an example of the kinds of eating that.
Yeah, when to use AI, when it's, when it's appropriate, when it's not appropriate. Um, plagiarism is always something we talk to them about, like, change a couple of words in the sentence.
That's still not your sentence.
So, those types of lessons that would, you know, it's always good to just be reminded and that kind of thing. Um, but those are kind of some of the things that we've been doing on the writing side of things. And a big part of what we're doing for writing in terms of the research papers is argument. So ninth, tenth, and eleventh grade, all teachers, all students will write an argument and paper at ninth grade level. And then we'll do a tenth grade level, which will be a little bit more intricate, go over some more things. The eleventh grade level will be a little bit more intricate, but the idea is to make a claim, and then go support it. Right, make an argument and support it. Um, and that's something that all three levels will do, and we will know that when they go into a tenth grade, Phil Cook class. Phil Cook knows that these students have the experience, whether they had Dave Poole or Sean Goulart, Amber Sackos, doesn't matter who you had, we all don't get the same similar experience. That way you can build on the experience and help them grow as writers. Um, some kids have a hard time making an argument and supporting it, and that's why we're here, but I always remind them that they're teenagers and they're great at arguing. That's kind of what makes them teenagers, so, um, but it's, it's a lot of fun work when you, when we.
Including arguments about how to change the handbook, which I just got to hear, um, another student's, um, I was invited to fill this next week as well.
Yes.
It's one of the things that they do in this area, is making an argument about identifying some areas of the handbook, why it should be, you know, what the improvement should be, why it should be improved. And, and, um, the teachers often invite in the administrative force to, yeah, get to take it in, and also respond to the students and counter arguments. And Q and A is, is, is pretty great, and I got to do one of those today.
When we talk about reforms, we say, I, we have a common assignment, that's the ninth grade assignment, um, to reform a school rule. So what is a reform, not just get rid of the rule, but actually to reform one, to make it better, how does that help the school as a whole, not just you? Um, and, and then what we do is we have the presentations built, and when we get ready to present, I don't tell them, as I bring in, I bring in the administration. And, and they look at me, and I say, well, they're the ones that can change, I've talked to them, and like, and then Principal Cook sits there, or Miss Al sat there, and they listen to the school rules, and they get. Students get to appropriately and academically complain about the way things are, and why they should be.
It's a really great experience.
And what grade level, listen to what kind?
That's nice, yeah. Good, because it goes with the reforms of the nineteenth century, so we say, you know, these are the reforms, but to make it more student-focused. You know, when we talk about nineteenth century reforms, it's not always as engaging, or, you know. So I say, alright, reform something that you don't like about this building, and they all light up, like, really, like, oh yeah. And then I give them a template, I explain to them what the expectation is. Um, and then, but they have to explain why it's good for the school, you know, and then at the end of it, they, they.
Very appropriate, very thoughtful, you know, detailed, they read the handbook, that, you know, it's, it's, it's just like, I bring it up, and I interrupt, to bring it up to say, it's such a good example of the sort of engagement. Michael was talking about the engagement trust, I'm about to apply the reading skills and to apply this argument writing with evidence to something that's really meaningful for them.
Yeah. Um, and that's really kind of where we are with the writing, um, but, but the biggest, the biggest thing about, what I want to say, just to kind of put a cap on this, is that reading and writing is a shared responsibility. I think across the school, but really, I mean, social studies recognize, we don't have an MCAS, um, but, but, but the English department does. And we can do a great job at reinforcing the things they're teaching. The more that we can do things in common, the better it is for the students, so, we're here, and that's why we're super excited about this work. And we're, and the third and final slide, for me. Um, so, not to belabor the point, we meet in PLCs twice a week, and then we meet in department meeting, one that I'm leaving back for tomorrow. In fact, tomorrow, in our department meeting, we are going to, um, firm up what a common rubric it is like for our research papers. So tomorrow, everyone gets to bring their ideas, we're gonna throw them up on the board, and we're gonna start building out what a rubric will look like. And not only do we build a rubric together, because a lot of what we do is teacher. Not only do we, um, put the ideas up there, but then once we're all comfortable that we basically, we listen, it's on our directory, and it says, we all agree to use this rubric with them. And we, and the argument is that, you know, two years down the road, if Mr. Jones says, well, I didn't know we're doing that, no, we signed this document, we agreed to do it. And, um, but the excitement, exciting part is that everyone in our department, cancer, is on board with this work. So it's, it's really, really great, so PLCs twice a week, we meet, I always say that it was like meeting in our states. And then the department's kind of like our country, right, so we meet, we meet with the states, and then we bring it to, we'll bring it to the, the national level. Um, so twice a week, we do PLCs, once a week, we do department meetings, and we really talk about, you know, a lot of things, but really kind of the direction where our, our group is going. But just to kind of, just to wrap up, because I know that I've gone long. Um, we have seven general ed teachers, uh, three of them have twenty years of experience. Um, you know, we have four teachers that are teaching college level classes, we have three NP teachers, and then we have Rich Francis, who we just pitched. We're gonna approve the Southern Hampshire University class, so they will get credit for the Southern Hampshire University if they pass the class next year. Uh, we have a great addition in Jim Barrett, who's coming in, and has a great new perspective, a ton of experience, a ton of great energy. Um, it's just, it's just an awesome group, Richie, Amory, Alyssa, Jim, Dave, uh, Justine, the special ed department, Jacob Vladoff, the special ed department, Arnie, Mariah, Sam in the library. I mean, I'm super, 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 um, lucky to be part of this group, and Phil Cook, who's just, it's just, it's just an amazing group. Super excited to come together and do this work, and, uh.
So that leads us to what we're looking to do in the future, and we, again, want to.
Sorry.
Yeah.
So just, there are more observations, and then you can, yes, two things, one. I remember being in your class, it was, it's one of the only high school classes I've watched being taught, and you were asking the students, Mr. Goulart. Um, to, to decide who is their, um, their favorite, um, founding father, and then to support it. I, I, you were going from student to student, and it, and it was not Jeopardy, because they had to support it. This is before this rubric, and I studied history, and I was just like loving it, so it was really great, and it feels like that's more of what we're doing. I'm also reflecting that wit and wisdom, right, like, this is what wit and wisdom, what, did I read?
That, that's one of my punchlines at the end of this. I love it, that's what I did, I'm so glad you saw that.
Oh, of course, like, right, so this is, I mean, and in elementary school, they're using primary sources now, and they're, they're having to support and all this. So, I mean, obviously, this is amazing and fantastic, does make me question the middle school, so just wanted to put a pin in that, right? So we've got this great example, your GHS, these two departments working so well, and some, you know, developing this so beautifully. Um, and we win wisdom, so obviously, this is, you know, winning combination for our students. Um, so I just, I just wanted to note those two things, because I think it's really important. Also, James, you always used to, what is it, chunk chew?
Yes.
Right?
Chunk chewing.
Right, right, so all the chewing, you know, I'm hearing a lot of chewing.
All the chewing, lots of chewing.
I'm hearing a lot of chewing.
Not Michael's favorite word, by the way. I'm getting one sided information, let's not love the word chew, but anyway.
So, follow with me.
Thank you.
So anyway, so I'm hearing all of that, and I just want to commend you, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you, and I just want to say that I would like to say that was rehearsed, you know, also. James came up to me and said, the school community's gonna come observe it, I said, when, they said, now. Here we go, so, uh, but thank you.
No dog and pony show.
I love that one.
So, uh, Michael and I were talking about wit and wisdom this morning, we had, you know, Michael obviously some insight, uh, through Amber and, and wit and wisdom, it's something we've been talking about along the way. And it's something, you know, we've been thinking about, like, we're familiar with that same research that wit and wisdom is based on, about providing that rich context and that rich engagement that gets students access. More challenging texts, so that's really what we're doing too, so I'm glad, that's, that, that's really good, thank you for, for mentioning that. And, um, like I said, I don't, I can't thank, uh, Sean Michael and the both departments enough, they're so great to work with on these initiatives. Um, and so our goal is to get to that, uh, student growth percentile of sixty, to, 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 our colleagues in the math department are very close, and we wanted to get up there as well. And then, um, we're looking, right now, uh, our students are at sixty-seven, sixty-eight percent on the STAR three sixty benchmarks, looking to get, um. Seventy percent or more of our students to that level of, of being at benchmark or higher. Um, and, and that's where we're headed, but, um, more importantly, that's just the satellite, more importantly, you heard a lot of street data, you heard a lot of street information. And we're really happy that you gave us the opportunity to ask such good questions.
I just want to comment, step for the bad notes here directly from US teachers and programming leaders, they have their passion for, not only what you teach, but how you approach it from a collaborative. Leadership perspective. Your colleagues, it's really important, it's important work, and we know we needed to improve our scores and our skills, right? Not scores, but the skills of our students, and, um, and these are very powerful ways that, that we're getting. It's gotta be interesting, by Zena.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, quick thing, I, I wanted to pick up the pin Laura put in there about the middle school, because I know my son was telling me about how he and his fellow students were arguing for an earlier start time. I mean, a later start time for middle school, so, they, they have similar processes of argumentation.
Yeah.
I don't know what particular, um, you know, mode they're using there, so. Yeah, and, uh, you know, I was thinking that, um, these are transferable skills, uh, to say, like, say if you're writing a research paper, paper in biology.
We've got to.
By supporting, you know, information and such, so, I think it's gonna work, you know, well for other disciplines as well.
Yeah, I think it's, 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 having them make a claim is more challenging than it seems. But then, once we get them to the claim, because I always sign off on your claims, because if you're writing a claim, where's the paper go?
Yeah.
But then to have them support it.
Yeah.
You know, come up with the three ideas as to why this, this claim is true, you know, it gets them away from the biography, you know, George Washington was the best president. And then, he was born in Virginia, it's like, no, that's, that's just a story, like, tell me why he was so great.
Chopped him a cherry chicken.
Yeah, 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 you get a lot of fun facts, it's like, that doesn't support the claim. It's, it's, and, and they're gonna be a teacher, they're, yeah, yeah.
Are you excited about that?
You might help us, but I think they will be. Alright, that'll be good.
I, I see a lot of, you know, happy.
So you were saying, Michael, in case a new teacher shows up.
It's gonna be a really tough.
Yeah, I appreciate the help, yeah. Happy to do it, go ahead, so, that's, this is really great opportunity, um, to really focus in on this.
Any more questions? I have a quick question, and I don't want to, but I've been told by university professors that their students aren't reading full books.
Ah, oh, that's so good.
And I'm, I'm curious, because you're talking about books. I'm a, I'm from a family of readers, so I see people reading books, but I'm hearing from, like, I was talking to Professor at Salem State, who said, they're just not accustomed to it, they don't read a full book. I'm just wondering what your experience is with that.
Well, we do, we, we read full books, we, we do, and that's.
And that's, and that's.
It's hard, yeah, I, 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 that's what I was trying to speak to, with, with the issues of stamina and working memory.
Right.
Because, yeah, that's, it is a, a great, I think it's a problem, I think a lot of students are, even with long excerpts, so they'll open them, but look at the MCAS, and you can check. See so much text, you know.
Amazing.
But, um.
But so, just to say, I know, just as an observation, I was telling Amy this anecdote today, the, uh, signposts, for example, that you mentioned. And usual essays students in the ninth grade have been working on, right, where they're, it's, it's sort of like, as they reach, builds the stamina by, you know, noticing certain things and patterns, right? Giving them these instincts to look for, um, and then pausing and having them note the patterns, it rewards the longer read. Because you see the pattern repeating, you, you get it, like, this, act, this shows up five times in the book, I noticed, I noticed it. I noticed, I noticed it, and I have something to say about it.
And then Jane Eyre is interesting.
Right, exactly. Because you built to that place. So we try to build, not just because we told you so that reading is important, but to actually build in the excitement, the enthusiasm, the reward for reading something longer and being able to follow those patterns, see how it evolves and develops, and there are levels of discovery. I saw some of our, our most challenging readers, uh, Mr. Giglio, one of the ninth grade teachers, was showing me some of the, um, uh, visual essays that the student had written, where they had tracked the, um, signpost notes through, had chosen a signpost to develop a claim about, and did, and then represented the argument visually, right, with quotation, with pictures. And in doing this, you could see a student who can't do it, that really resistant readers, this sort of thing, show uh, over the course of a long work, that they're able to follow a thread and then, and make an argument, a pretty some work that they're really proud of. It was, it was really amazing to see that. So that's how we, it's, it's work, though.
Again, stamina would begin in middle school, right? I mean, like, all of these tools, reading full books and everything, has to begin before ninth grade. Well, but, but you're not, you're not in school. You're not.
I did a lot of school.
Right, you did a lot of school, you know, I read books, but anyway, just.
Uh, benchmarks, uh, can you explain, so you have, uh, midterms and finals, and then you have a benchmark every quarter?
We have a year, for the three sixty, yeah, we do one right at the beginning of the year, um, we try to. One right after midterms, but not too close, you know, fatigue, you know, and then one again. It's about three sixty.
Yeah, and you mentioned incentivizing the, the benchmarks, just because the students are not because it's close to the midterm, because they have other tasks that they priority.
Yeah, yeah, they can, I, I mean, if they, they, they don't, I think it's with, with the STAR three sixty, they, they wonder, they, they wanna know how for something, what is it, you know, I don't know if the information they get from it. I mean, some students might not know this valuable, or we need that information as teachers, you know, so. Um, so we try to, but you know, we, we try to build anyways, just, you know, explain to them, this, this is important information, this information you could use, we can use. Um, people, you know, it may inform the way that we, um, you know, as you go through high school, we're looking at these floors, and we'll be trying to intervene or do it, you know, so you wanna show us the very best you can do. You know, try to instill like a team, well, let's all really tackle this together. Um, but yeah, incentive is, that's a big. Um, it's also relatively, uh, quick test, too. We can get it done in a period. Um, so the students aren't, they, they don't get too, you know, um, too daunted by, you know, to, it gives us some pretty good information for tasks, so.
It's also the same platform they've been using since second grade.
Yeah, definitely.
Um, so they're very familiar with it, and they've taken it three times a year since second grade. And it's, you know, you know, high schools have a different perspective of things, but, but it's not an unusual task item. Um, so adding, extending it into high school is a nice way that we can, uh, soon we'll be able to watch students grow all the way through across public schools, which is pretty amazing.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean, and Michael, and James.
Thank you.
That's some really great examples of, um, how, you know, support and, and setting clear educations. Um, uh, in this case, the school leader, um, and the support engagement that, then the collaboration and the partnership among the staff and teachers, and also, um, the departments. Um, then that time together, that, that set teacher leadership is, is the most profound thing we have going. Um, and I really think I both, you talked about your colleagues, you know, with, you know, respect and admiration then, but also how much you're growing. That is the most powerful, that combination of real great leadership, um, that's supportive. It allows us to sort of work to happen. It's, it's in the work, the teacher running it.
Next, I think this is the six, six, public hearing budget.
Great. Uh, okay, so, um, we're gonna transition from, um, some great work focusing on learning and thinking and analyzing to the budget, a little drier, but the the thing that undergirds all of our work is that makes it possible on a very significant level. So, uh, everybody matters, in Los Angeles schools, everybody belongs, and every student learns. So, um, we're gonna go over a few things here, uh, a little quicker on the overview and current, uh, we will talk about the current fiscal context, because the budget we're facing is, uh, very tied to that, both local and state, but also very important for us to, um, put in context, which is a pretty, a very strong budget for Los Angeles schools in context in comparison with other districts around us near bar. There, there's some very significant difference for what we're able to do and what other district. So, um, we're focusing on where we are, where we're going, the longer term, and then really zero in on where we're investing in FY twenty, through the FY twenty twenty-six budget. For the particular folks, especially education, because that folks know, um, that is the large majority of changes is in specification. Um, the numbers, the budget summary, and then the next step. So, here we go. In terms of overview, um, as you've been saying, again, our schools and students are doing well, there's tremendous learning and growing opportunities in our schools and classrooms every day, uh, and we can do better, we're working to do better. You, you heard today about how, um, in the high school, um, especially on, in our, in our ELA and history, social studies departments, really working to do better. Um, our students, staff, and our families, and the work on specification is about that as well. Um, you know, the work is ahead, and we understand where we can invest. We'll talk about the long-term budget plan here tonight. And I'll show that to you. That's really the, the best roadmap we have right now, uh, not only what we're gonna try and do now in this budget, but also the upcoming budgets. That's really on the specific staff level, we have that mapped out. Um, we'll continue to provide robust opportunities for our wide range of learners. And we'll continue, and we'll, as we, we'll talk about tonight, invest in building our support for special education students and our most vulnerable learners, so. Um, to the fiscal context, so, um, lower growth in tax receipts in the state, uh, beating it next year. Uh, lower growth in Student Opportunity Act funding and Chapter Seventy funding, okay, which is not keeping up with inflation. Our health insurance costs continue to rise at a hi- a higher rate than local revenue, and we'll go into details about that tonight. As we know, ESRA and ARPA have ended, and, um, our special education costs, they are leveling off some here. Um, especially compared to, uh, the, the last two, three years of very rising unit increases. Um, and that allows us to do, all, all our budgets are much higher, and our costs are much higher than a few years ago. Um, for special education, including added district placements. Um, uh, some of that leveling off allows us to do some, make some of the investments that we're, that we're making, so that's. The other thing that allows us to have the budget that we're doing, and the growth, is that the mayor has committed a very large to the city's growth and revenues to the schools. Um, and that is a, a real commitment from the mayor, which we deeply appreciate, and it's really making this budget possible. Um, in a, uh, FY twenty twenty-six city budget that's grown by about three point nine million, its schools are requesting two point seven two five million of that. This is a very high percentage. Um, at the same time, regionally and statewide, we're seeing layoffs continuing in districts on the North Shore and around Massachusetts. And also communities right now, many, uh, pursuant overrides, and those overrides aren't successful, or in some cases, even they are successful. Um, that, very significant staff cuts will happen, um, that are happening. Um, and then nationally, um, unclear with the impact of changes, the federal level will have in terms of Title I's, uh, IDA, IDA, special education funding, you know, other, other ways. So we're making some tendencies, uh, especially right in Title I. Uh, we're too much telling that tonight, because we're focusing on the operating budget, but just wanna, of course, um, acknowledge that as important context. This as a reminder, of course, we're building back from cutting twenty-eight positions last year, okay? Um, we can only build back some of those each year, um, and we'll be able to continue that, um, so we'll build a small amount of those back this year. Um, I mentioned the mayor's commitment to the, uh, to the school's budget. Um, uh, improvement in funding increases take time, we have more to do, and we can't do it all now. And whether it's special education or increasing staff, we aren't doing it all now, we're you know, moving forward, and a focus and sort of, you know, uh, measured by the priorities. Just a quick summary of where, where we are, um, the total budget is, is recommended to the committee is sixty-four point two million dollars. Um, has been developed, strength instruction, free student belonging, learning and achievement. On the vast, vast majority of our, our budget, just like any school system, eighty-five percent for us, to allocate the salaries and benefits. Um, reflecting our commitment to invest in our teachers, the staff, who directly support our students. This budget prioritized our efforts to strengthen specification, instruction and support, including better connecting special education and general education. Strengthening special education system instructions, we'll talk more about, um, our aim to develop a special education system um, to help, help strengthen our work overall. Besting special education teachers, um, and, and, and besting their ability to provide instruction in general ed and classroom at the elementary level, but also building and strengthening our catering, district-wide programs as well. We'll go into more detail on that in a bit. We are also making, uh, and have to make, um, progress in having a sustainable financial model by moving a number of expenditures that were on grants for a number of years on the current budget. There are significantly, um, significant, um, areas of, uh, not only some staffing, uh, staffing, but also essential curriculum and supply materials. Um, such as everything from wit and wisdom, uh, to amplify the middle school curriculum in math, and also in English. And then also Chrome, it's, at this point, are an essential instrument in education every day. So, I'm gonna focus just a few things here in terms of building the budget. So, uh, as always, our budget is based on our, our four priorities, so deepening student belonging engagements, correcting instruction, and better connecting general ed and special education. Our inclusion model will help us do that better. Uh, strengthen social, emotional learning, mental health support, continuing those efforts we've done over the past years. And then strengthening special education through improving, improving coordination of service, services, specialized instruction into your program. So those are all seen in the budget, and then, and those are really reflected in the vast majority of the budget, um, in addition to so many changes we are making. Where we are headed over time, again, when we first started the budget process here, we sort of gave six or seven slides on the details, these bullets here. We'll do that tonight, but these are the areas we have to continue to invest in, uh, over time, to strengthen instruction, student learning, achievement. Beginning to keep a student belonging, starting their special education practices and programs. Supporting vulnerable learners, including multilingual learners and those needing academic support. Begin to strengthen the range of programming and opportunities at O'Malley and Foster High School. And continue to move annual recurring expenditures, um, that they're on grants, uh, to the operating budget. The best, um, probably the most important, you know, there's, we have a, like, a hundred plus page budget book at this point, okay? Um, but probably the most important, um, page in, in all of that is, I'll show you now. Um, just one second here. This is the, um, the summary of our long-term planning, uh, for, uh, really, primarily for, it's probably positions, that's obviously the highest part of our expenses. But this is mapping out our long-term needs are by position across the district. So you see the elementary school significant investments, we are planning the coming years, uh, significant investments in, uh, co-teaching and inclusion uh, through both teachers and ESPs at the elementary level. Um, you'll see that in some places, like, for example, uh, West Parish, looking to add adjustment counselor, especially for the district programs that are there, okay, so with that. Um, areas people asked about in terms of academic, uh, support, so at all three levels, so here with the ESPs or, um, for academic support. Ten over the, over the upcoming years, uh, for academic support, and we have something similar at uh, tier two academic intervention teachers at O'Malley, and then also tier two, tier two academic intervention teachers at GHS as well. Um, as I said before, the, this is the path forward, it will take a number of years to get here, okay? But keeping these in mind, both signals everyone where we wanna go, but also the things we've gotta work on each year. Okay? Um, so the budget increases every year, but we also have, you know, contracting expenses. Um, but this is, again, something we haven't done before, so really wanna spell out to the committee, but also the community um, and our staff, you know, where we believe we need to invest in coming years. That's the budget book there, and available for everyone to see. All the, all the budget documents at this point are, um, available on our website. Um, I just sent back the presentation now, but that's important, important uh, doctor, everyone should know about, um, especially in terms of knowing what's coming up, where we aim to go. So now, I'm gonna zero in on FY twenty twenty-six, so, and the investment we're making FY twenty twenty-six, it needs to do the changes in the budget. Okay, because we're doing the vast majority of things, that are, the vast majority of the budget, um, upwards of million dollars of it, are, you know, maintaining and strengthening our existing program, services, support, instruction, sort of thing. There are only a very limited number of additions that are possible, once you get past health insurance increases and salary increases, and moving some things, some grants back onto the budget, so. So, uh, Mike and I'll talk through this, so we wanna really zero in, uh, targeting special education, okay? Uh, respond to some current concerns that have been raised, you know, throughout the process here, um, but also to update, um, the committee and the community on what's been happening, especially at elementary schools. Okay, well, Mike and I'll, we'll sort of do this together, um, and Mike is, sorry. I'm gonna, I'm gonna just show you, sorry. Is, is, the intention here is to build, and Mike can talk, we'll talk about this. Is to build a system of support for special education, okay? The idea that all the pieces and parts gotta work together, okay? Rather than, um, a teacher here, a very professional there, um, or, you know, being disconnected from general ed, education, that they're focusing on special education students, or the program is being separate from the school, okay? Um, or services being separate from all those, okay? So, but that's the intention, is that by having a teachers can be able to work together, the school works together, the whole system across grade levels works together, supports students wherever they are, and as they, you know, um, as they grow, um, through the system as well. So, I hope, that's, that's what I'm talking about. Um, but Mike will explain this further, and then talk about the different chunks that, that make up the system support.
So, inclusion program. What it suggests is that all kids can learn. All kids can learn with the appropriate support in place. So, the appropriate supports in place means the services go to the children, not the children go to the services. Children going to the services is exclusion. So if that is our primary delivery of instruction, you do not have a continuum of services, and we're not doing what's best for students and for student outcomes. Co-teaching is one model for that, right? It's two, done, done with a case teacher and a special education teacher in one classroom, reducing the student teacher ratio, employing models, specially designed instruction to reach and teach all learners, because all learners can benefit from being with. And vice versa, you know, with students with disabled students. So, so with the primary mode of, of special design instruction is the special education teacher's responsibility, and also taking on with the general education teacher. It takes on, it takes on a number of, of models that can take place, that brings that to life. It better connects the general education teacher and special education teacher, and, and brings evidence-based practices in real time for our population, students acquire, specially designed instruction, and also intensive instruction. So even the high performing, um, students, whether they're just, have a disability or not, because we do have high performing students with disabilities. Um, they can get it, they can get that reduced teacher to student ratio, and get this, get the support that they need for that advanced learning. So, uh, next one.
Yeah, just in terms of the, um, the, the aim at this point is one special education teacher, two grades at, at three elementary schools, and then, and these veterans, one special education teacher per grade. We're going towards that. We're going to plan to show you through the earth, and reflects that, that, that intention.
Right, so it's not all at once. So it's in a measured way, we have to convert IEPs in on this, and it's done in a way, um, as we'll talk through uh, how we, um, got the schools' input in on how to employ this. So the next pillar here, uh, with this formation, um, or ranch, is the specialized in services. So, that coincides with inclusion. So, we're not saying that all students need to be included, and not. And not receive specialized services in a sub-separate setting, we're not saying that. We're saying that services in a sub-separate, sub-separate environment need to augment inclusion services. For the population of students who require that service, so that coincides with inclusion program.
Some students will be pulled out, in addition to getting some core service instruction, inclusion program will also be pulled out for additional services that they're IEPs require.
And lastly, our district program. So in coming in here, the districts, July, I got a chance to data collect. And get a good pool of data, see what we do well, don't do well, what we're not doing and what we are doing. See those gaps, try to fill those gaps. So we need to strengthen our severe autism programs throughout the district. We need to expand on our language-based program. We have to introduce a new life skills program at the middle school. And then we, we have to expand in our language skills program or learning center. And the last bullet there on that is the, the social emotional programming. So we had gaps in with this very important program. So we need to transform and strengthen the program at the middle school. So that responds to the population of students who are presenting with an emotional disability. And make sure that it fits in with what the population is telling us. That there's work that has to be done there. And we introduced a new social emotional program at the elementary level this year and we're expanding it over. We're gonna solidate that program with the Beeman program and both programs will be located at Beeman.
So it'd be sort of kind of upper elementary, motivated programs at Beeman this year. They've got a lower elementary, Bushville program at West Parish this year, they're both gonna.
At the high school that already exists, yeah. The gap, that's also going to be, spend some time working on strengthening that. The last thing I'll say about this, which is really important. We can't just program our way out of, of solving of students' needs. It has to be a coordinated effort with different programs, with services. And an inclusion program, the inclusion program has to be the backbone of the district. We can't just isolate kids and programs and keep them away from general education opportunities. Our inclusion program has to have a capacity building feature to it. So that when kids are in district programs, they can flex into our inclusion program when ready. They have to go hand in hand, can't just build one, not the other.
Yeah. I'm gonna have a bunch of questions, like, some of them will be the same as I had Monday night, but I think there's a larger audience and a more engaged audience tonight. When we talk about co-teaching. More than one, and you kind of said it early on, there's more than one model per se. It sounds like we're using, is it a single model or kind of a blended model of different?
Yeah, so within co-teaching, so this will be part of the professional development that will be forthcoming. And so there are five well-known models of co-teaching that we, so there could be new ones that also there's. There are the models that have been derivatives of the five, it's been around since the nineties, well-known since the nineties. And so the idea is to flex models, multiple models on a given lesson or for one lesson. So it's all teacher-driven in that way, we're empowered to use those to reduce that student-teacher ratio in a variety of different ways. As it relates to student readiness, as it relates to the type of instruction that's, that's being offered. As it relates to the outcome that we're looking for.
Yep, and just a follow-up question. The inclusion program, that sounds like the base to me, that sounds like the base that you're looking for, say, it's gonna be an inclusion type program.
Yeah, it's gonna be the backbone of it. It can't just be general ed, specialized and being district programs, there's a divide there.
Yeah.
We have, we have to have an inclusion program that's viable and, and employs a model and a structure. Can't just have services and add teachers without that structure.
Thank you.
My understanding is that we have a co-teaching model at vets.
Yes, right.
So how, I'm just because I, obviously we have staff who were teaching in that model. I'm just wondering how similar is that to vets, like the veterans for what you're.
So it's not only vets, and so it has pre-existed in high school.
In the high schools as well.
I think in pockets at O'Malley and in pockets in.
So that's what I'm saying is we have staff who have done that.
Yes.
And is, is what was happening at vets, in elementary, that my understanding is had that model most clearly. I mean, maybe that's an Amy question.
I can answer that. Veterans was a co-teaching school for many years. When veterans and East Gloucester merged, East Gloucester was a Platoon-y school. Intended in the building was to be a combination of a Platoon-y and a co-teaching school. The building was actually designed to support co-teaching. Some of the walls fold back so they can go from room to room. The small breakout rooms in between, because it's meant for more station form of co-teaching. Where the students might go to a different table for specialized instruction within the same content. So the building was actually built for co-teaching. Last year, when we had budget cuts, it really made it very hard to have any semblance of co-teaching for that. So adding, if you notice, these veterans is where we're adding first to get, get back to that. So there are a lot, half of that staff has had, right now, but actually half has had experience with co-teaching. And, yeah.
And we're gonna show just their school, what their plan at this point is for next year. And so we'll talk more in depth about these veterans doing, how many teachers are, you have a train.
Yeah, when I said that inclusion program, co-teaching isn't the only thing that gets inclusion. I'm afraid that they're getting, becoming synonyms and not. Inclusion program involves a lot more than just co-teaching. Every time a teacher scaffolds a lesson, they're using inclusion strategies. When they are using project-based learning, they are using inclusion strategies. When they are doing an inquiry-based project, that is inclusion strategies. When they're using technology to help students access a curriculum, those are inclusion strategies. When they use the D cap, which I'd love all teachers to use, they're using inclusion strategies. Co-teaching is one model of many inclusion strategies that, you're lucky she helped me create the D cap, I saw that. But you, co-teaching is one model under the larger umbrella, umbrella of inclusion. And I, I'm worried that they are becoming synonyms and I'm worried that we're saying we're not an inclusive school. Because we are an inclusive school system and this is one strategy that we are adding to our toolbox. I'm sorry.
No, thank you, no, thank you for that, thank you for pointing that out.
You shouldn't say adding though, right, expanding.
Expand, expand, right, it's currently, it is also currently in place at Beeman. You're gonna say this later, so I'm not.
So in terms of the process here, we've heard something over the last two years, in so many different ways. You know, by being in classroom, by being classroom, and when I say we, I mean, all of us, okay? We were from teachers, okay, teachers have expressed the need for strengthening specialization, families have expressed this need, okay? Desi's expresses need to something to, to your folks monitoring. We've heard people speak up on the comment in classrooms, in individual meetings, in larger meetings, in negotiations over children. It's, it's well-known, if you look at any of our data and outcomes, that we need to strengthen and change special education, as not new information for anyone else, okay? Last following, as Mike already said, he began the work to understand how we're doing things here, okay? And then January, February, initial communications and work, and at that point, February twelfth was a date. We'd hoped it was gonna be sooner in December, but that got way late. And February twelfth, Mike gives initial communication to school committee, but prior to that. You've been working with program leaders, principals, you know, you've been working, you've been working with principals to sort of, to get them sort of on, on the path. And understanding that this is, that we, the change that we need to make towards, you know, both strengthening programs and also moving more towards coaching. Okay, of course, February twelfth, and Mike, Mike laid out the initial plan, okay, an initial sort of intent there. But at that point, hadn't had enough time during the year to do all the work, it's necessary to get it rolling, okay, and get it up and running, okay? Since then, been a number of meetings on a lot of different ways, okay? Mike, Mike being sort of the education staff, June, we're moving, we're program leaders. I've been having meetings and both at schools, but also with individuals or small groups. That was teaching leadership, presented to your school committee a number of times. So that's all that happened as well, to answer questions, help people understand more of what's happening, but also make sure folks know that like it's still developing. And the most important work that's been happening is just over the last couple of months at the school level, okay? Principals working with some staff, special education folks, some particular classroom teachers. Those who are, who are, in order to figure out at each school, how they will implement and begin or continue with co-teaching next year. What's crucial isn't any of us here make those decisions, but each school figuring out for themselves in terms of where their students are at, okay? What grade levels may be able to do this well from the beginning, it's for early adopters. What experience folks have in there, what size of classes or what's gonna fit for them. And that's the work that's happening and we'll talk more about in a second, okay? And, and I think when we show that to folks, folks will see that it has been measured, okay? It is thoughtful, we are, we are, as we have said from the very beginning, will have an overtime. Will be generated at school level for the most part. And, and also will be supported over the coming years professionally. Let's go a little bit further, that's the first step here basics is initial professional development. That's gonna have to happen just for the folks who are early adopters, beginning, beginning or continuing next year. I'm gonna now go into a few things about what we're working on here, again, as we said, initial steps on K to inclusion, okay? With details from elementary school are coming up next, okay? Initial steps on K to five reading support, okay? We're adding reading, reading teachers at both West Parish and East Vets next year. This allows our specialized reading instruction, but also lessens the man, the special education liaison and teachers. So they can provide co-teaching or other support, okay? But those two schools, that's adding that level of support for specialized reading instruction. And then initial steps on strengthening K, district, district program, so on these, continue to expand the emotional behavioral private program, already mentioned that tonight. I bet that both early elementary and elementary will be at Beeman. Add an emotional behavior program at O'Malley, O'Malley had two teachers. Something has not been in place in the way we needed for at least a couple of years, not more. And a life skills program at O'Malley, that is, just like the, responding to the needs of the students. In this case, cohort students moving up from elementary to O'Malley. O'Malley hasn't had, hasn't needed this type of program in the past and recently, now it does. So like Mike has always said, you've got to respond to the students who are fond of this, their student needs. And then part of that, and we said this from the beginning and share it with folks, is developing clear program descriptions and entrance and exit criteria for all programs. Part of that work, a really important part of that work will be happening next week. Where program staff in all the elementary programs will be, what will have, will be working on draft program description and entrance and exit criteria. Develop drafts for them to build from, give them input and feedback on, because those are something we haven't had in our programs in recent history, okay? That's clarity for staff in terms of what their expectations are, that's clarity for families, okay? Also clarity for the assessment and review process when we have placement as well. But mutually involved in giving feedback and building those program descriptions and also identifying entrance and exit criteria of the program.
So the last part, I guess, that's not a fixed activity. Description, opponents, methodologies, that's, and, and, so that's, that's an annual practice. So that's what I'll call, what I call the digital renewal process. Our programs have to adjust to what our population is telling us. It can remain fixed and be adaptive and move the organization forward. Have to be responsive to our population, so we'll be doing this annually. Important factor.
Well, something about that, so when you say responsive to our population, I'm assuming you're meaning like the, the needs of our students.
Yes.
Which, I mean, I don't know, but are there, are there trend lines? I mean, I'm assuming you're meaning a trend line, saying, here's what we're seeing, so here's what we need. And what I'm assuming you're saying is that those trend lines can change.
Yes.
Right, but our staff are gonna be trained for what they're doing. I mean, how, it feels a little tricky to just sort of keep changing, you know, keep changing a program.
So it wouldn't be like, so we'll give wholesale changes unless, so there's like, it's a cohort approach. So, you know, we're introducing that at O'Malley because that's what, that's what the population is telling us. It's shifting from the middle, from the elementary school to the middle school, so, so that brings in a new program to, to an existence that's never been there. So that's what we're seeing, so we have to adapt our practice to what the population, what the cohorts that we build, trend lines, if you will, said. And, and be adapted, be responsive to it. So when we have existing programs, like a language-based program. And what, what we do is, is we'll look at what the profiles are telling us, so it's not just decoding and language comprehension. It could be, there's an uptick in anxiety. So, so we have to be responsive to that, because some kids can express a lot of anxiety because of reading difficulties. So we have to have that, those data points in place so that we add anxiety support as it's part of the program. So we're not talking about necessarily wholesale changes, it's just that we have to pay attention to what the population is telling us.
So following on that and following on what we've heard tonight, just out of curiosity, I mean, obviously though, people need time. Staff needs time to train, right? So I guess my question is, as you make these changes, how do we, how do we incorporate that into our planning? The fact that it takes time to adjust to learn the skills or to, I mean, that's just true for everybody. So, I mean, I'm just wondering, as you, as you build these programs, how, how do you look at the time it takes to train staff?
Yeah, it's multi-pronged, right, so it's not just one solution and all that. So it's multi-pronged in the way of consultation, we have great clinical staff here in the district, clinical teams. And so there are initiatives that the clinical teams flex out to a multitude of, of, of settings. General ed setting, unstructured hallway, reset, launch resets, whatever that is, great appropriate and specials like this. So, so that, that kind of insight, kind of work with a range of kids is very important. And that's on, that's on the spot kind of PD, if you will, and it can be done in a programmatic way, structured way. In addition to that, so that's not the only, right? So in addition to that, to be structured, professional development. And so every year, we're gonna be looking at what our population is telling us, what are the outcomes telling us? And what, how we're gonna leverage professional development as part of our development plan accordingly. So that, that's ongoing on any way that we do here.
So I was gonna push back just a little.
Sure.
Because one of the things we heard, I've heard, I've heard in the last years, right? Is that as behaviors have gotten more extreme, right? Staff needs support in how to deal with those, like these are new behaviors, they're extreme behavior. And it's not, you know, some have experience with it and some don't. And it's training, it's not, I mean, as it worked, at least one went from live hearing, to have it be on the spot because. Because the behaviors are extreme and students are in distress and teachers are in distress and so. I mean, it just feels extraordinarily important to me that people are being trained. Ampli for everything that they're being expected to do.
Absolutely.
So we'll, we'll show you a little bit of just about what, what the, what the timeline for that is, okay? Especially for co-teaching, I'll give you an example of that, okay? Now, in terms of what Mike is saying, in terms of, you know, so say, in, I'm just using language-based programs, and you ask you have to, anxiety in that program, okay? That's one component of, that would be, say, new for teachers in their profession, okay? And the program doesn't write teachers, okay? So it's, so it's not like it's a wholesale refashioning of program.
Right, no, wait, wait.
So that, so it's, it's an added piece, and then we really have to think through a couple of things. One, the time we have, is there time during the summer, what can we do, can we use for training prior to school starting? Get a little more time now, prior to school starting in terms of, you know, one day before, okay, a part of one day before, okay, that we had in the past. There are the earlier release days, okay? Some February time, there's, there's that any time as well can be used for that, so we don't have enough time for that. So we have to use that time. So we don't have, um, enough time for that, um, so we have to use that time really well to fix it in. And part of that, with something to do better is, um, and next May sixth is an example, is how are you organizing staff for those, those, those times you have, and what fresh stuff are they doing? Okay, so rather than one size fits all, again, for next week, um, you know, the folks who are down, down there levels, early release day for them, um, are, who are going to be doing co-teaching next year will have, you know, one, um, professional learning, you know, you know, it's sort of in the first step. Others are working with Amy and, um, and Amy Cam.
And Chris Castle.
And Chris Castle on a whole different part, okay? So that's, that's the way you've got to, it takes a lot of organization planning out ahead of time to do that, sort of, okay?
So your operative word was extreme. So I'm, I'm assuming with extreme, it's chronic, repetitive, right, it's there. So I don't think anybody is saying that co-teaching is going to solve that.
Right.
Okay, so extreme, right, so if we talk about extreme chronic, uh, behavior and/or emotional regulation issues, then you start looking in at program or services, right? And so we're presenting a few programs that exist in the future. So, so we're saying, we're saying both, we're saying yes, inclusion, but we're also saying yes, programs. So it's, it's both, and it shouldn't just be one, it shouldn't just be one. It shouldn't, because when youngsters are in a program, those are, those are, those are burgeoning skills or opportunities for kids to recognize the triggers, the emotions, what makes them, uh, what, what makes, what's makes the profile for their, their own, um, their own profile do what it does, it's self-learning, right? So then building out that repertoire of how to deal with that. And then when we get to a, a point of, of readiness, then we go into the inclusion setting, or back to the inclusion setting in a measured way, as program design would follow, so, so put their support there. Nobody's saying there's going to be direct therapy, inclusion classroom, right, done by a co-teacher, basically.
Last thing I was going to say, I just have to, I've said this before, I said it before and you explained it, but I understand the reason why putting upper and the, the early and upper elementary program at BEME. Um, I'm very concerned that that's going to be enormous pressure on that school, that's already got a lot of behaviors. So I'm just, um, it's a, it's a very tight school, it was not built for this, and, um, you know, I just, I think that's going to be a lot.
It's, there's a lot of pressure on all buildings.
Yeah.
Um, especially ones who have, you know, so, so West Parish and East Betterman's have been housing all these two programs, a lot of pressure on them. Um, and this is a way to leave some of that pressure. Um, but also, you're right, it's going to, those are, they're all challenging for, there's autism, you know, it's separate, but there's autism in the inclusion, or whether it's, um, emotionally, you know, they're, they're, um, filled with intense needs. They'll need to continue to support, uh, our staff, uh, better in those areas. And part of that is the work that, that they'll be helping with, you know, and working, working on and working with in terms of what the, um, programs are really trying to get done, and what the profiles are, and the programs are, and what the criteria are. So, so those are pieces that we need to get much clearer on. Um, and that, coming from that, that is, um, you know, more identification of what's important, they, um, so they do that. And then, and then, I, I, I think, I think, you know, what I really want to emphasize, and I, and I, sometimes I assume this, I shouldn't, it's my mistake, okay? Is that like, there's a real deep understanding of, like, the complexities here. Okay, and also what change does, you know, and what, and the, and the challenge around change. And part of the challenge around change for, for humans and adults is, is, is a sense of, of loss, you know? I'm going to lose what's been familiar to me, I'm going to lose a column, I'm going to lose a teaching partnership. Going to lose the, the, you know, confidence I have in knowing what to expect every day. You know, those are, those are real, real things, okay? And I, I never ever, I'm knowledgeable first of all, but, uh, I hope folks can appreciate it, like, like, I get that, we get that. And that's why we have to take a measured approach on this. We're struggling to get to the point where, like, each, uh, elementary school's planning next year. Um, it happens over time, it happens over time, but, but at the same time, it's difficult as changes. There's losses and experience, um, there's real urgency, okay? Um, in supporting our students. And, and, uh, I, I, I don't, I, I don't think it's actually a reasonable choice to say one or not the other. To say programs and not inclusion, okay? We can do both in measured ways over time, okay? Uh, and we need to, but waiting for one, to get, waiting on one to get the other one right is making those students wait too long. Let's continue because I want to get to some of these details here, okay?
Right.
Um, so co-teaching is continuing at BEME. So BEME has done being, doing co-teaching at grades four and five, um, so they're adding third grade next year. Okay, great, first come, have been offered, and this is just, this is just beginning, okay? Because it's, it's taken time to get here, because really what we said to, to the principals in the school and, and, you know, through them, you know, to their, to their, to their staff, or, you know, is figure out where it's going to work next year for you to make a step on this, okay? And while we are initially sort of laid out as, you know, two grades each school, okay, you'll see there's some differences here. And that's most important because it's really important for teachers and their staff who are together to figure out what's best for them in terms of their students, in terms of the situation of the IDPs, in terms of readiness for staff, that sort of thing. So BEME is adding one grade next year, okay? Um, those three teachers will have the opportunity for the rest of this year to visit and collaborate with the fourth, fifth grade years to see and learn from them, okay? They're beginning to, beginning to go over schedules and see what possible is for, for making schedule work out, okay? Um, and they're doing it with special education teacher, um, should at these levels, okay? So they know their path forward, it's adding one grade, okay? Um, and learning from folks who are already doing it, okay, now they're getting involved in physics operations scheduling. At, uh, bring coaching back these veterans, so the telephone earlier, thanks to Amy, describing what veterans had in the past, okay? Um, and the plan was to move towards, towards co-teaching over time. Um, the expectation for, for these veterans was to have one grade move forward next year, okay? That's, you know, the larger school, four, four classrooms per grade, okay? Um, the third grade will be moving forward with co-teaching, um, and they're enthusiastic about that, according to Mr. Fusco, um, and, and also geared up to do it, and they've been very, very helpful in terms of developing different possibilities and schedules and approaches, okay? Um, the second grade team is, is interested in, wants to start co-teaching, but they're going to do it in a very different way. Uh, just sort of, you know, just introducing it, uh, through their, their what I need, what I need box, or wing box, okay? Um, and they've also been developing, um, and they came to, uh, uh, principal and assistant principal in terms of, of, of that approach. It was coming from the teachers there. Um, and then also the other piece on that is, and this ties into, you know, how we develop, how folks develop over time, is that they're planning, um, again, just planning this point, okay? Um, uh, to have next year's walkthroughs and professional learning communities focused on these classrooms, folks visiting classrooms, learning the teachers, seeing them as people learn from each steps. Again, that, that sort of captured a few things, one, um, a measured approach, adding one grade, okay? Do a place where a number of the teachers in third grade, um, already have coaching experience, okay? Some do, um, a number, about half, about half do and half don't, okay? Um, uh, another grade is looking to try it out a little bit, and get them going for the following year more fully. Um, and also integrating into the professional learning of, of the school, well. Mike, we'll take the next two.
Yeah, so PUMCO, um, so, we'll begin, co-teaching at grades, grades one, grades three. Uh, so that will involve four teachers, one special education teacher, um, one third grade classroom teacher, and two, um, first grade classroom teachers. So this was the schedule and approach was developed by special education program leader, primary principal, and consultation with staff as well as the director of special education, really. And we showed the entire staff on April eighteenth, um, including next year's schedule, staff and special education teacher. Um, and we added a, a twenty-five special education capacity to help them. Um, so, uh, one classroom, higher professional, per grade level, in grades one to five, and two for, uh, kindergarten.
That level of staffing and professionals is comparable to other schools, in some cases, still more than other schools have. Okay, and that's with the productive reallocations of, of a professional, okay? Um, so, uh, PUMCO did have more, uh, uh, classroom professionals than any of us, any of the, of the elementary schools. Um, so this balances that out. Um, it is definitely a difficult, difficult choice to allocate staff from one to another. Arguing that, uh, making it a little more comfortable, but also to make sure that, you know, inclusion can go forward in other schools, but also there's a better balance in terms of how many classroom professionals are assigned to each grade, uh, across elementary schools.
And I think in the past, we've always tried to look at different things at different times to make sure we have equity across our elementary schools, you know, this.
And then, and again, I, 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 I,
Obviously, you know, in considering the needs of the particular school, A and B.
Not, they're not easy choices, and, and there's a loss to PUMCO, right? And that's really important for us to acknowledge and to recognize, okay? Um, and, uh, like you said, in, in, sometimes we have it now, we're trying to build back a number of areas. We have different choices, but it is based in both the need, but also balancing out, um, staffing across district. West Parish?
West Parish, so, um, pointed to Lena, building principles in. Um, she said, she said that the, the reading support takes on, uh, uh, its inclusion support takes on very much of what a co-teaching model would do, and they've done that for years. She couldn't even pull out.
So much longer.
Yeah, so.
Remember how long it didn't do it that way.
Okay, uh, so their take on, uh, co-teaching for next school years. Math focus, so grades two to five. So this would be, uh, taking the strength, because they decided this would be their best approach, taking their strength from, uh, one of their special education teachers that was tied to the curriculum and has strength with, uh, math. So they're flexing this co-teaching model to really focusing on math. This, that's what the strength of their school is telling them, get this started. Same way, uh, provide opportunities for other teachers to rotate through, do observations, see it in action, um, as, as a, another add value-added layer to professional development. So, um, so the program, um, liaisons and the math groupings, um, were, were gathered and they helped make these decisions to get to that end. Um, and it was really all about, um, so Mindy, Mindy Shimatara, she's the math teacher.
No, no, okay, sorry.
Oh, sorry, she's math.
Yeah, so, so.
She was involved with that.
Yeah, so, so the, first of all, the, the coaches, the coaches, Adrian Rickyman and Jim Turtar at West Parish are, um, you know, just discussing with Selena, really, you know, want to support teachers like they always do, okay? You know, I can go on on this as well. Um, Mindy, uh, we have a lot of, as we talked about, many folks who have experienced co-teaching, okay? Across the district, Mindy is, is an example of that, she taught co-teaching when she was at Gordon College, well, BA and MA students, you know, teacher can, teacher candidates. So she's real, um, very, very knowledgeable about it, so, um, also good support. We're working with Mindy, and other areas supporting our teachers too, but this will create support there for the teachers. So ultimately, what we want to show folks is that, um, this is being done based at the school, at the school level, okay? Based on what the schools feel like they can manage and support next year, okay? Over time, there'll be more and more involvement of folks, okay, because it takes time to do all of it, okay? And, uh, their approach that are based, um, on what the schools can, can do, where they're well positioned to do well, okay? And start off well. Um, you also see a variety of different, different ways in different grades. Um, so that's crucial as well. Those are decisions that we would never make at the, at the district level, okay? Um, staff, the principal, school leader, others, you know, the schools got to figure this out, okay? Uh, based on their certain circumstances. So I think there's, there's, as we heard, some folks, some folks tonight, agreement with, uh, the, you know, inclusion and co-teaching. And, uh, and I, I hope folks stay, stay, and again, another piece on this is, it's also really hard to engage out to everyone equally at the same time, okay? So principals have been focusing on those folks we're going to be doing it next year, okay? There's more to do with, with, with those folks especially. So the last couple of pieces here, and let's try to, let me pause there, see if there's questions, because the last couple of pieces, we need to hit the private programs and then professional development.
Just wanted to touch on, uh, one of the things that you hear is time for planning. It is, can we touch on that for a few minutes on?
Sure.
So that will be, uh,
There's never enough time to plan.
Right, right.
In public schools, there's never enough time, not during school day, never enough.
So strategy, right, so that's what comes to mind with planning, right? And so common planning time requires strategy. So good news here is that the elementary level, the wisdom program is structured and has a structure. Every lesson is structured out, so we're not talking about grassroots, um, developing of lessons because it's already done. So then it's about modeling capabilities, and within that, pretty, oh, and what are the models? What are the roles and responsibilities, and what other strategies can be employed based off of what the, what the outcomes, the readiness for the kids, that's what the lesson are, is going to inform what kind of model do you, they do up against the design of the lesson that's already there. So you don't have to design a lesson, it's already, it's already there for them. So that would reduce the amount of common planning time that's required. You're still going to need it, no doubt about it, right? But it's not this, we're filming a lesson every day, so it would be that degree of common planning time, because the lesson's already built up. Same to with the.
I'm going to follow up on that. Well, we've heard a lot about how those lessons have to be adjusted. I mean, those lessons are not good in form for every student. That's part of the event, I mean, there's tons of shabbatting, and that does take time, doesn't it?
It does, yeah, so it does, so, so I didn't say there wasn't any common planning time, but with roles responsibilities and known models that can be employed, there's a range of strategies where common planning time, it can be asynchronous common planning time. It can be real time, base time, common planning time. So it does require that, and so we have opportunities for that, for sure.
But, so, not necessarily all of it, but for additional planning, some common planning time as well. Um, there will be some summer hours available for preparing your roles and deciding then. Um, is it enough? Probably not, there was never enough time for pulling. Um, but we, we are providing some additional planning and within the contracts that we can. Um, and we are acknowledging, I mean, acknowledge that they need time to collaborate and, um, get, and the professional development will continue next year to help support them to do that.
I think I'm ready. Um, well, I'm, I'm hearing this. I mean, I heard a lot of this the other night, uh, from a binding subcommittee, um, so I, I come to this meeting with a little bit of confidence. And I apologize that I wasn't here to hear the concerns that were put forward, I wish I can, I've got to look at it, but I did read what Rachel put forward. Um, but I'm trying, I'm trying to see big picture, right? So I completely understand the urgency, right? We've heard from parents claiming we're not in compliance with a lot of, um, services that need to be provided to our students. Um, what we've seen from all the student behaviors can be for many different reasons. To me, in my opinion, there's no doubt that we have an urgent need for change in the way we deliver special education, because what we've been doing isn't working. But I also get stuck on the fact that May fourth, uh, once a training, May sixth is only a week away, and then four months later, we're implementing something different, right? And change, I wholeheartedly agree, change is tough. They push it on me at work and there's always resistance, no way, you're in your comfort zone, you stop thinking of other things that might need to come first, or you don't want that plunge to happen, um, but, but it happens, right? So I'm trying to balance this all out, try to find the way we all move forward, because it sounds like from the messaging you're telling us, us tonight and the other night, that there is a lot of conversation going on at the elementary schools because they seem to figure out what they want already, right? They know math is going to be specialized at West Parish and, and the BEME issue of, um, not issue, but bringing the two programs together over there. So it seems like there's been a lot of planning, but it doesn't seem like everyone's been brought into that conversation to understand the amount of planning that has happened already.
I'd say both in, I'd say, I'd say, no, there's some plans that are done, that they've got to, I believe, in the right direction right now.
Right.
Um, and there needs to be more, um, and there also needs more communication, both from us, but also within schools as well. You know, because I don't think everyone at the schools knows. You know, because I don't think everyone at the schools knows exactly all the pieces, you know, the way, as, with as much depth as maybe they want them, okay? So, you know, again, I, I don't, I don't want us to be ever saying that this is some finished product, it's not, it's, it's a work in progress.
But there's a lot of uncertainty to there too, and I'm not giving you a pushback on to do this, but I'm just trying to think, I'm a reasonable person, I'm not in the schools and I'm hearing all this. And trying to support it, which I do support it, I'm just trying to understand the pushback and the, the need to be brought along with you. And I think a, a lot of it is staffing, right? So we experienced an unfortunate last year where we lost staff. That were, are integral to making, supporting what we want to do next year, right? So we're building back, because we can't do it all next year, we're going to build that and this, and depending on hiring. Special education staff, um, to make this happen, and in the world of having difficulty in hiring, right? So that's sprinkled right on top of being, it's already there, are we going to have the staff, right? So that's an uncertainty, so I just, I'm, I don't really have a question in this. But I guess my position is, Dr. Jarvis, knowing that you've done this program in another district. I think you said within three or four years, so you're bringing some experience behind that knowledge. Have you discussed that with staff and how you've learned from best practices or?
So, so it's true, yes, we did it in three years, um, so, but it's, I just want to be cautious about.
Different, it's the same, right?
I don't want to place a blueprint that work.
No, and I'm not saying that.
So that's, I've been very cautious about that, uh, I know that the outcomes, this is right, my focus is, has been really the outcomes in with co-teaching. Uh, is, is, is really what I'm targeting, because if you look at Kentucky, twelve years, it didn't take me twelve years, being involved with this. Growth percentiles rival the stake at the highest level. That's why, it's because of a robust curriculum, it's because of the co-teaching model. Could you really get to drill down for intensive instruction in the general education classroom, pass to the curriculum, two certified teachers there. It's really robust.
No, I understand that, and in fact, we've had co-teaching here before, I mean, I was here on the committee when we had the veterans. With that, went through program, we discussed it, so we were blue in the face and decided to move forward on it. Then budget cuts came, that goes away, you know, and that's another concern in my school. But also, we had to do less staffing, I thought, too. It was, that was the just one school, but there was less, we had to cut staff at one point, too.
We, we cut staff last year, several years ago, we cut some staff.
Yeah, several years ago, when it was, when we were building, when we were having the same conversation we're having now, probably need.
So I provided the training.
Right, so I guess, I mean, my ask in this is, I, and I know you're going to talk about next, so I really don't, shouldn't talk about this. It's probably going to be included in professional development, but it just seems like there, there's a disconnect somewhere.
Yeah.
And clearly, this is the direction we need to go, because all the data shows that. When we hired you, we, before we even knew it was you that we hired, we, we wanted change, um, and now here you are making change. Um, so I, I know there's a lot of pressure there from the parents and the expectations to improve teaching and learning. But I just, there's a little more that needs to come, I feel like, and maybe I'm going to hear from that in professional development. But I just feel like there's a disconnect between maybe the teachers that aren't as involved in this. Talking with the teachers that are involved with it, and maybe there is a little concern that's not being shared, but I just feel like there needs to be more open discussion. Knowing the timeframe is only four months away, I support this, but four months away is, is going to be here for you.
Okay, can I add something about the expectation of four months away?
Yeah.
Um, I want to be very clear, I don't think we have them, for whatever reason. A two and a half hour training on May sixth is not going to make the first day of school a perfect co-teaching model. No one is expecting it.
Okay.
What we are doing is creating schedules, we're adding staff in strategic spots where we are. We are parlaying early adopting co-teaching. We are going to target professional development and support so that that co-teaching model can grow next year. We cannot say we're going to go to co-teaching without adding another grade level liaison at East Veterans. We can't do it, so in the budget, you're going to see, that's one, one of the, we cannot do it at Pumco without changing. Um, there are three special education teachers where two of them have reduced caseloads because they're doing program leading. We can't do that without creating, giving them full time to be, have caseloads. We are changing the structures in place so that co-teaching can grow. No one is expecting it to be perfect next year, no, no one's expecting it to be just all of a sudden, we know how to do this. But we are going to create the environment where we have can set the seed on November, I'm, excuse me, May sixth, November. Whatever is usually my big day, so we've got something, but May sixth, we're going to set, plant the seeds.
Yeah.
We're going to water them over the summer with some time to collaborate with people that are co-teaching. We're going to support that growth in the fall. What we're doing now with this budget season is creating the structure so that it can grow. No one is expecting it to be perfect, but we cannot even begin to do it if we don't provide the staff. Plant the seeds and support its growth. So I feel like a lot of people, we've kind of gotten the cart before the horse, and there's an anxiety with change, and I appreciate all of that. Um, we're here to support that, is it going to be perfect? No. Are we expecting to be perfect? No. Are we expecting it to be a start? Yes. Are we going to continue to support you? Yes. I mean, that's where we're going.
And that's just like wisdom, you know, we have to have wisdom to be fully baked and, and, you know, fully perfect from the beginning. The, the same thing with, with the math and the, and the personal changes at, at O'Callaghan. Next time.
Right, we have a presentation at the high school where they are continually, you know, doing things, talking about it, revising it. Moving, you know, building on it, you know, it's not, we decided in August what we were going to do for nine months of school, right? So this is one of those things, and the other night you talked about, um, correct me if I'm wrong. But, you know, I think what you said to me that resonated is that services are being provided for students. Students are coming out for that, and, and I think it's really important to kind of have, what you said the other night is now. By having more services in the classroom that can be in the classroom because of the co-teaching model, those students benefit, but other students benefit. Right, and I think there's a real, there's a lot of power in that, right? So taking the four kids, you now may have six or eight with that particular approach, who need that approach. But they're just not necessarily on an IEP, so they might start grasping the material better, deeper, whatever. So I mean, I mean, we talked about this years ago, when it was that better, you know, strength or power of this. And I would love Jeremy to talk as a teacher who, please.
Yeah, well, I was, I've been trying to think of one question, because I, I, I've been a general ed teacher, English. For fourteen, fifteen years with the co-teacher. There was a lot of pushback, you know, when it started, same thing, we had limited training and then, you know, okay, inclusion model. Everyone's an inclusion teacher now, and we said, okay, like, what's that mean, how do we do it? Who's my new co-teacher, what is co-teaching, you know, I, so, um, I kind of want to know how it works. In the elementary and middle school, uh, just personally, because I know how it works in the high school. Uh, and I, I wish we had Mr. Goulart back, because he was starting to talk about co-teaching. But, uh, how, you know, maybe there are bits of like, who's in the classroom, who's coming in? Those kind of questions that teachers have, uh, where they don't realize that it's like, all students benefit. ML and EL students benefit, uh, general ed students benefit. I mean, I have kids that are on IEPs just for English and not for any other subject. And so that's part of the beauty of inclusion, is that you can have a general education and not just be in resource classes. You know, which is a wonderful evolution from the past, so, um, so. What does it look like in elementary school, I'm just, you know, that's something we haven't looked at, maybe we will, I don't know, I wish.
Yeah, so very similar, I, it's, it's a work in college, certain institutions, practices in college. It's disciplinary, or whether it's disability, general education, whatever it is, it's, it's no different, it's, you know, same, same. I mean, the, the services go to the child, just having over reliance on pulling kids out. We're pulling students who are receiving special ed services, they're missing education, there's still education going on.
Right, right.
For the sake of special education, they're missing general education, and we're trying to accelerate learning that way? That's going to be really hard to do, because they miss education. What we need to do is bring a special, special design instruction, evidence-based practices for all students and students. Disabilities, receiving special ed services, bring that to life in the general ed sector, the majority of our students. Majority can be further unpacked, but routine process, effective progress, I think that would all get better.
Can I add my elementary school lens?
Please.
Focus on, now, um, so it's going to look different in all four elementary schools as they should. So the number of minutes don't hold me to, but at some, some schools, for example, for math. There will be a schedule that the special educator will go into a math class for twenty-five minutes to an hour, whatever the, whatever is decided at that school. And, and that's going to be school-based decisions, not me deciding. And it will be set that every day during math, during that time block, the special educator will go in and they will teach the math and focus us. And of the five models that we will be promoting, or maybe we're going to invent a sixth model, seventh, eighth model of co-teaching that's even better than all the rest. I don't know, but, um, during that time, the two teachers, two certified teachers. That takes a classroom of twenty-two students, and now you have two certified teachers in there to teach the math instruction. They could go into small groups, they could do stations, they could have one teacher teach today while the other teacher is checking in and keep, giving support. They could have, um, they could have team teaching where they're both going through, it depends on the relationship with the teachers, they'll decide that. Um, in a kindergarten classroom at East Veterans, which we were, I mean, East Gloucester, we were never a co-teaching school. But one of the best co-teaching lessons I've ever seen was an EL teacher would go in every day at the same time for forty-five minutes. And they would have stations, and the five-year-olds would go from station to station, and they saw every kid over the week. Because it took time to rotate five-year-olds, but, but the kids got small group instruction, individualized to what they needed. There was tier-two support, because a parent had it, had one group, the teacher had another, the ML or EL teacher had the third. Some teachers weren't, some students were, unless it, it was truly individualized and all students benefited. You could walk into that classroom and wa, and watch teaching, and you wouldn't necessarily know that these three students were on IEPs and these three students were ML students. We could see that every student is getting it. That's what the intent is for it to look like in an elementary school, it won't be all day. You cannot put two teachers in the classroom all day, fiscally or logistically or anything else. But there'll be blocks of time, where a second certified teacher will be in a classroom. Whether the focus is ELA or math, or whatever the schools are deciding. And it will be routine that they can count on, that person will be in the classroom to support the teaching in the way that see, they see fit for the students in front of them. The teachers decide to benefit all students, that's how it will look in an elementary school. Once we get there, day one, second day of school, won't look like that, we'll get there. With the expertise of our staff, we will absolutely get there.
Yeah, and that's the beauty of having two professionals dealing with, you know, a subset within a larger population. You know, you have, you know, you'd have two doctors, you know, uh, working together with, uh, with all these children. So that's the same, same model we've found, exactly, you know. And some, and every, and that's the other thing, is that a lot of classrooms have different models. So you might have two teachers, uh, equally co-teaching, you know, they, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. Uh, and then you might have, um. Uh, just, you have different, different classrooms, different teachers, different professional page, so.
Even different units or different topics, or different needs of the students, you might need more small groups, so you break it into stations.
Yeah.
It, it's going to vary, and the teachers will, someone are kind of, and work their magic, they always do.
Thank you.
Great. I just want to wrap up on, on one thing in terms of, of, of programs, a quick, a quick sideline about those. Because this is something we've been saying since the beginning, uh, just want to remind folks that, because also we heard some folks ask about these tonight, and, and.
Yeah, so, so every one of our district programs, uh, and including our coaching program, will go through this process. And that will have outlined values, methodology, components, program description, entrance, exit criteria, right? Uh, that doesn't forego the team process, because that's how we get into two special education programs. But these are just designed so that, um, that the programs themselves and others have an idea of what the district offers. So, um, and in part, this is what we'll do, and the goal basis is, is part of the district development process. We'll make sure that the values, the components, the methodology are matching the population that we are serving. So that's an ongoing process, uh, it, it needs to be that way, because it does need to flex and be responsive to our population. So, uh. So, I, the only other part I'll say to it is, um. So, so May sixth, the cohort of, of teachers, staff that are part of district programs. Will start to, uh, look at draft, um, program descriptions and start to offer them. So we'll have some new staff next year for district programs, it's anticipated. Uh, so I want to make sure that new staff and returning staff are part of, it's crucial that the staff. That work these programs every day are part of the development of program descriptions. Don't have that coming from central office, right? Framework can come from central office, the clinical team can, um, bring into, um, that. Uh, but it's the finer details that are put into play that, that the practitioners have to be involved in. And I want to encourage them to be innovators with this, uh, as Amy just mentioned, with co-teaching, maybe there's a seventh or eighth model that could be defined, right? That could happen, right? So we want to encourage that kind of innovation, um, and in with our program. So it's really crucial that, that this process is organic, um, with our staff that's involved with the program. They have to have that kind of ownership at store, this is tough work, the district program, right? These that were extreme, right? So whether it's a learning disability, or it's emotional disability, or whether it's neurological, whatever it is. A lot of times, it's, it's intensive needs and it can be some real challenging work, so, uh, the staff have to be part of, of that process.
In terms of, um, co-teaching, the initial project, I've heard, heard, is, is, you know, May sixth, okay, is the sort of first take at it. And that's going to be the folks who are early adopters, so what we talked about tonight, from different elementary schools. And then, summer, summer, as Amy also says, summer hours will be available, this is one for folks to, for those teams, those groups of teachers. To work together, okay, administrator and, and principal training, uh, there's during summer leadership in August as well. To that, they're understanding just the different approaches and some of the challenges that their staff will face. Um, and then, like we've done in the past with other efforts, so for support folks, you know, throughout the year. Okay, so that might be early release days, that might be through PLC time, that might be through common planning time, might be through staffing time as well. Um, but that, that, that's ongoing, next year, in the following year, okay, the following year. Um, and we're certainly open to, you know, getting additional time where possible, um, but using all the time we have available to support in that. And that'll be part of the professional plan, um, on, on a little basis, like it has for Wisdom, as, as for, uh, math, ELA, middle school. Um, that's what we do things, we'll do that in the situation as well, I just, Amy's just so right in terms of, so, um. This won't, this won't take time to develop, and we, 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 we be urgent with some of our students. We need to be patient with our, with our, ourselves and our colleagues in terms of becoming really good adults, okay? Thankfully, we have a good foundation, um, from a lot of folks, you know, I just covered it earlier. But whether it's folks from Eddie's Veterans, folks at Beeman, you know, um, some of our coaches, our special education liaisons, you know. Folks who have experienced these places, and they will, um, you know, um, help and support their colleagues and others to, to. They're doing a great job, we need to be patient with folks as we forget to. Um, I'm going to skip, so, so now, that's sort of focusing heavily on that. Because it's some of the big changes that the budget, budget is allowing, as, as they described, okay? What, I'm going to skip over these things, because. What, I'm gonna skip over these things, because, just because of time, to focus on the table here, which is a summary of the past four or five slides, okay? This in terms of what are the shifts that are happening. Special education teachers, is your classroom, special education teachers, East Veterans at O'Malley, two new positions, okay? Special education reading teacher, two new positions at East Veterans and West Parish, okay? The job codes were expanded, when it says new, they were expanding the current job code from point four to one point oh, that supported our, our students, our, our students at Gloucester High, Gloucester Return Program. They have placements that they can develop skills to have plans and, um, more possibilities once they finish, uh, school at Gloucester High. We are reallocating, uh, uh, several positions here, um, special education teacher, uh, program with Beeman. So as we said before, the lower elementary emotional behavioral program is moving over, um, an RVT and especially as education teacher over to Beeman, okay? Uh, so the education administrators at West Parish and O'Malley, so we are creating two new positions, which are shift from current practice, okay? The current, um, special education, um, program leaders at both West Parish and O'Malley don't have, um, don't have, uh, teaching loads, okay? Um, that, uh, yeah, um, we want them to be able to provide much stronger support for staff or families and ultimately their students, okay? If I doing so, I may need a administrator will be able to do that, right? Specifically, West Parish has needed another administrator for quite some time. That'll be dual role of assistant principal slash special education administrator, but that person will support, um, uh, Tolina and staff in terms of the programs, area, approach, really, the programs there, okay? This, 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 it's going lots of ways on a day-to-day basis, um, and ongoing, ongoing basis. Uh, and then O'Malley, again, trying to ramp up the, the level of supervision and support for staff there, and also make sure that, um, uh, families getting support they need as well, okay? The higher level of support because of the, the need there and the complexity of programs. Again, moving our professionals from, uh, from, sorry, from, uh, the preschool in Plum Co., there's higher need and all balance out, um, to the staff and across elementary schools. And then we're moving to, uh, the position to move to East Bets, West Parish, and O'Malley. Um, in terms of timing on those positions and how that'll work, we first need to help, we need, uh, more time for to understand, uh, what position, where a position will be, will be open, okay? Um, we don't expect some of these folks to move just to different positions, it depends which positions are open. Um, but you're through attrition, basically, through your retirement renovations. Typically, paraprofessionals are letting us know that later in the year, uh, we have until January fif, June 13th, sorry, to identify where folks will be. But certainly all the paraprofessionals in the district now will have positions next year, um, if they choose to, okay? But that's, in terms of timing on that, it'll be later into May and into June before we really switch it out.
Nice question.
Yeah.
Um, Plum Co., how many pairs are leaving?
Four positions.
Four positions, so the work that those pairs currently do, what happens to that people?
So we converted, uh, the team chair position, program, special education program leader from Beeman to point five at Beeman and at Plum Co. So, which is a manageable case for these schools. And in doing so, that value adds a point five special education teacher that's available to offer special education.
Some of that work is tier-two intervention, which I, you know, they may, maybe some of them, some of the education students, but not all. And so some of those will go away, like, like they have at other schools, okay? It's a difficult, difficult choice, okay? But we really have to prioritize supporting education students in this way, in these ways. Um, and so that's a, and also make sure, we can do that across the district, we've got to give district view on that, perspective rather than prioritize one school.
So, is there a way in our budget that we're gonna vote tonight to be flexible in a response to any issues that come up at Plum Co. and do that law?
You'll vote on a contingency, for special education, um, which we are always responding to that. And so adding staff that we have this year, when we started holding the program at West Parish, we responded to a, a need there. We had staff at, at Beeman, at Beeman, at, at, um, East Veterans, okay, um, respond to that. You know, for a time, we moved a paraprofessional from the, from the preschool over to East Veterans in the past two years for, for part of the year. Um, so we're always responding that way, and you are actually voting for continues that allows for that. I'm definitely keeping a close eye on, now the year is, is preschool as well, okay? I'm just concerned there about changing practice that'll have to happen because of shifting staff. Um, but that's something, you know, we're committed to keeping an eye on and making sure we staff it in the proper way.
This may not be possible, but do you, as you, as you reallocate positions, are you able to sort of check in with people and see who's willing to move?
Yeah, yeah, also, yeah, absolutely. I mean, first, gotta understand what the openings are, and it takes some time right now. Okay, you don't know that, you know, we know some resignations, but not, you know, and, and, you know, retirements. Do we know those about teachers before, about pairs, okay? And so need some more time for that to sort through, um, and then know what openings are. And, um, you know, and so those, those folks who are, and, and, and we need to have that sort out, and then we'll make opportunities available to, um, the positions from Plum Co. and, um, and, uh, sorry. School, sorry, um, see how, how, you know, what people are selecting and what they want to be doing, everything, right? But we first have to, um, get to the point where we know where, where the opening is on.
I just wanna note, like, this, the word real, reallocation is maybe troubling here. Like, I think the idea that, like, you ask people and talk to people about what they're willing to do is important and is not reflected in that word when I hear it. So I just wanna say that, like, that's interesting. Um, oh, I just think I didn't, I wasn't sure, I guess is what I'm saying, and so, um, transfers, you know, I mean, I don't know exactly, I'm just saying that's an important piece.
Good, that, that's a great, I'm, I'm glad you, yeah, I'm glad you asked, I'm glad you asked that question, because, because, right, the reallocation is a bunch of their return.
Right.
Okay, and as we have in our contracts, we have change, we have, um, change in assignments and transfers.
Right.
And we anticipate many of those will, will be this, okay, there's voluntary transfers and involuntary transfers. All those are thing, are the ways we move people, okay?
Right, I don't think as we talk about it now, it's important to be clear about that.
And, and, and so, we'll lose all of those probably, okay? There may be some involuntary transfers as well, okay? Um, but, yeah, so, but that's, you know, our, yeah, so, thank you for that, and I'm glad you asked that. Because, you know, it'll change assignments, that's when you're within a building, okay? Voluntary transfers and, you know, you have transfers, you know, so, those are what folks want to vote on. I mean, because, yeah, so, thank you. Um, I just wanna keep moving forward in terms of the rest of the information here, uh, because we do have to get some, some numbers, um, and actually put it up on the budgets. Uh, a couple of things that I do wanna really just hold it on because, um, we are, we are adding as much staff as we might to for next year, and there's some real clear reason that we're doing that. And that's because we have a, a hundred thousand dollars that are coming off of grants and have to go on the operating budget. Especially the bus transportation, just a hundred thousand dollars, okay? Um, more than a hundred thousand dollars moving from our, from ARPA onto our operating budget. Um, if that was going to staff positions, it would be very different, okay? Uh, curriculum materials, so this is everything from with wisdom and our, uh, math curriculum at elementary schools, as well as math and, um, uh, ELA at middle school, um, as well as Chromebooks, okay? These are all things going back on the operating budget, um, which are necessary and needed, um, and they're really essential to our, our instruction and operations. Um, and again, if those weren't coming back on, but, you know, uh, if we have continue to have, um, meaningful growth in our budget year to year, some of these dollars will be open for new positions in the future, okay? Um, and then, great, I'll go up to, about grants, um, just in terms of costs. So, yeah, they are, are increasing a cost, they fall into three areas always. Education, we talked already about, about those tonight, contract obligated costs, uh, in terms of, um, uh, benefits and, sorry, in terms of wages. Uh, and then also health insurance, we talked a lot about our, our staffing costs already. Uh, we're gonna talk a little about special education costs or health insurance costs. Here is the increase in our cost for added district tuition. And then just, just transportation, so this is, we haven't talked about any of this tonight, other than we're talking about is in district. Here's special education, um, uh, programs for students who have some high enough needs and some complex enough needs that we can't support in the district. And you can see how the added district tuition, uh, has increased, has more than doubled over the past five years. And then, um, we're seeing a stabilization in transportation, thankfully. Um, and so you do see, uh, a little bit less in terms of cost, uh, for this combined from last year um, because of the added district transportation has stabilized. In terms of, uh, what actually are costs, those are different than what's on the operating budget, because we fund, uh, specification costs for added district, you know, in different ways, visit transportation. You'll see in a second here. Good. Um, uh, our total cost, there's a one point five million dollars that matched the cost you saw on the prior slide, but then using circuit breaker revolving fund, um, and paying, uh, eight hundred thousand dollars out of that for next year. Uh, there's seven hundred and forty thousand dollars on the operating, on general fund budget next year, okay? About one point five million dollars. And that's the budget you're, you're, you're approving tonight. Um, in terms of, this, this tuition cost, so you see seven point two five million dollars, that's the same number you saw two slides ago. But when we apply the offsets, meaning circuit breaker from FY twenty-five, also FY twenty-six, and also have prepaid tuition of one point two five million dollars, just same we had last year, the, the prior year. The general fund, the bu, the budgets for the general fund, that is, which is three point seven million dollars. Our cost is seven point two five, but three point seven million dollars as total. Wow, a good question. And then moving on to another, the third area of incre, of increased cost every year is health insurance. You see the increases over the last few years in this area on the, on the, uh, top row, top gray row. It's an increase over the prior year, so this is a, we're just making a larger increase than we've had over the past five years, th, this upcoming year. Higher increase, I just, I just say, it's also cutting in, into our ability to, to add, add more staff, okay? And, uh, increase over the last year's, more than half a million dollars in costs. Um, and that's an eight percent increase, and you see on the, uh, for the third year in a row, we're at about thirty percent of our total budget, operating budget is, uh, I'm not sure it tells us. And then this is the growth of our budget year over the year, is FY nineteen. Operating budget is on the top line, so you see the proposed operating budget for FY twenty-six is six point four point two million dollars. Increase from last, increase from last year to two point seventy-five million dollars, again, that's a credit to the, to the mayor. And, and, uh, his support of the budget. And then this is just a summary of the proposed changes in the operating budget. So the special education tuition goes down, in terms of what's on the operating budget, and that's a combination of lower transportation costs and also offsets. Um, all salary increases are adjustments for all staffs, one point five million dollar increase. So the two point seven, two five million dollar increase in the budget, one point five, that goes to staff salary increases. Uh, on top of that are benefit increases, so three hundred sixty, three hundred seventy thousand dollars approximately. Remember I mentioned transportation lease, lease payments, because they're coming off of grants, three hundred seventy thousand dollars. The supplies and curriculum materials and Chromebooks are coming off of grants, or forty-nine thousand dollars, so that's, you know, if I add this right together, eight hundred thousand dollars in operating expenses, okay? They're going to, um, pay, uh, in essential, you know, bus transportation and materials in the Chromebooks, um, that we have down on the operating budget. And then the positions, the digital cost of new positions is sort of forty thousand dollars. In the future, if we continue to have, uh, have, you know, reasonable growth in our, in our operating budget every year, we'll be able to continue to have positions, um, uh, because the lease payments and the curriculum shows will be built into the budget at that point going forward, okay? But this year, um, because we're gonna have to take on some of the, uh, grants that are, uh, expenses are coming off of grants, didn't have that flexibility in here, even with the large. Uh, this is a summary of what you've seen before in terms of just percentage-wise, uh, on personal, the order expense and how we do it, and how the state divides them up, and we've organized it for the state reporting. Uh, this is, uh, chapter seventy, funding to Gloucester, uh, over time. You can see when student opportunity acting, you know, hit in in FY twenty-three and sustained, although the growth has, has diminished over time. Uh, this year, the governor proposed only about two hundred twenty, two hundred twenty-five thousand dollar increase in chapter seventy funding Gloucester. Mayor, you've talked about if that, that increases as we go along, uh, in the, in the state budget process, that increase in chapter seventy would come to the schools.
Except, thank you. Yeah, so the, from the governor's budget to the house budget, chapter seventy, however, the other, the other unrestricted government went down as, and then the other increase was to the assessment at the, uh, as. So in, in the end, it's a wash, so even though there's more chapter seventy, I'm not changing my numbers, because it's still the same number that's coming. Because we tend to take the other two.
But it goes, uh, how many did it?
It's a senate, if in the end, there's an increase, yeah, we could talk again, but I think with the uncertainty, that they've already locked a million, billion dollars from the house budget of the governors because of what's going on.
Yeah.
And I would say that every day is a new executive order for the chaos.
Right.
So we don't know until it passes the state budget. And we should also, not luck, because even after the state passes the budget, if it's our budget, the federal government has to lock totally. And they can just do a million things between now and then. So as of today, I'm comfortable with this, Tom.
Here is my department, which is, um, uh, what will be posted in the, um, uh, sorry, in, yeah, here, in the public hearing, uh, in, in the notice to the city, uh, in the motion at times about public hearing. And then the notice that you have as a handout, which is the table of the summary of the budget by department. Um, and then we need two motions, one to approve, propose FY twenty-six, to be heard in the public hearing, and approve the notice of public hearing. It will be submitted to the roster at times. We're happy to have any, any questions prior to that.
I just wanna highlight one thing, so as this budget today, the schools are getting a five point two nine percent increase, the city's getting zero. Some departments getting less than two.
I wanna say it louder.
I can't say it loud. The, the city departments are asked to come in with a level funded budget, some given a tad over, some are a tad less, but overall, it's a zero percent increase.
Thank you, Mayor.
It's a good year to prioritize the schools, so we appreciate it.
Yeah, we would very appreciate it.
So we had a motion that came out of the BNA committee on Monday, um, to recommend to the full committee that the fiscal two thousand and twenty-six budget, as presented, in the amount of fifty-four million, two hundred thirteen thousand, three hundred ninety-seven dollars, be approved for public hearing, and that's the most.
Second. The public's gonna have this at the, the hearing. Okay, that's great, okay.
I just wanted.
The public has access to entire budget book, it's all on our website there.
Yeah.
I just wanna state my concern, well, concern, um, that we're using more of circuit breaker money this year than we usually do. In other words, we're not able to save that for the following year. Um, with so much uncertainty, we're, we're still spending more of money that we rely on to feel confident in our budget. Um, and I just have a concern that we're gonna need some more staffing, and I just wanna say that. But hopefully that's not the case, they make this work.
The, the one, another thing the mayor, and, and, you know, is, is doing, you know, and, 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 uh, I think May 6th is when, I think it's May 6th.
City council.
City council will be. City Council will be um voting on, I might have the wrong date there.
In May.
It gets, it's next week. It's next Tuesday.
Okay, May sixth, the city council will be voting um on the special education reserve fund, okay? And so, uh for unbudgeted uh costs.
Yep.
That on certification, that is a really significant um. Uh. I know it's an opportunity, or just, you know, we, um.
Safety net.
Safety net, thank you, thank you, um that we haven't ever had in the past, you know? We're trying to get it done for a number of years, the mayor has come through with that. Um and uh that does um help us quite a bit. Let's try to go on budget needs.
Right, so unexpected, not budgeted, so if we need, if we need services outside of what we budgeted, that's a reason to tap into that account.
Yeah, the city council does have to vote to approve that, we'll have to share the numbers with them and build a case. Um but, you know, if necessary, we'll be able to do that, yeah.
Okay, um. This, this is a role. I'll call it, so this is the budget.
Mr. McKee.
Yes.
Mayor Varga.
Yes.
Chair Clancy.
Yes.
Mr. Malvin.
Yes.
Ms. Prince. Yes, Mr. Malvin.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, we need a second to, to, to read this. Posting.
I move that we approve the posting as presented. Um. That we approve the notice of public hearing on the proposed fiscal two thousand twenty six budget for publication. That could be much better.
Okay, we'll do a second for any decisions.
Mr. McKee.
Yes.
Mayor Varga.
Yes.
Chair Clancy.
Yes.
Mr. Menya.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yes.
Mr. Malvin.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, um. It's the budget. Well, there's one other item under deliberations and education issues, and that's related to the superintendency evaluation. We did last year's evaluation very late, we're trying to get that on track. On the schedule we should be on. So, superintendency.
Yes, I, I, plus for that, then, then I'll be giving you the calendar of the, of the, um. The process, it needs to be completed before the, and the last meeting of this school year, okay? And it'll be very soon, we've just done it recently, so I'll be getting your reflection on that. It'll be, um, it'll be tied to the, 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 um, plan for improvement goals. I don't think we actually established goals for this year, you know, um, so, um.
We're also, we're year three of the plan for ongoing improvement as well, so we're, so previous evaluations have been technically. Right.
Yes, you were, um, sorry, so, but, and, and so you'll have, as you have had in the past, time, respond, reflection, you'll have Uber from the Decium Q. Already just recently used, okay, obviously, kind of doing a drill. Um but I'll, I'll give you um a four, still leaving you a, a calendar for that, calendar for that.
Wait, so where, when you're due? Mrs. Cover Jones?
For the school year, you evaluated me for last school year.
This year.
Recently, and now you're about, about this school year.
To get back on track.
Put you back on track, as, as, as Capes said.
Thanks for looking at this track.
Well, I just think, new members come on in the new year, they don't experience it, right? I like the evaluation at the end of the year. Because that way, any new members that get elected get to see if all of your, what worked.
At the end of, which, which.
We used to evaluate in the end of the year.
Which year, school year or calendar year?
School, calendar year.
Oh, so since, my, my contract has always said, and, and.
We changed it for you.
Oh, okay, all right.
But before that, because that way, if new school committee members get elected in November, and they start in January, they have the full year to evaluate you, but that's a discussion for another day.
What do I, over there?
Okay, um, all right, so, subcommittee report.
Oh, me?
Billy and Finance.
Well, the only thing I have to bring up is the O'Malley windows. So we talked about the budget, we talked about the budget, we first were approved with the cent agenda, and so O'Malley windows. Uh as you know, that project's been ongoing, I'm just gonna be real brief, we're near substantial completion. Come back a little bit of money, but the project's almost done. Um but one thing we did discuss is that the MSBA um requires us to make an adjustment to the loan authorization that was done by the city council. Um so with that being, and the reason is, um, the school originally paid a hundred and ten thousand dollars for the design. Um I think it was, the authorization was, did not include that hundred and ten. But MSBA wants it neat and clean for the loan authorization to be the total amount of the project.
That's a reimbursable design, is that what they want?
We already paid it, but they just want the loan authorization to match what the.
I, I, I have no problem, just wanna make sure we get the right language down to Connor, so he doesn't sit again.
Yeah, David, uh, so he and then Congress were working with Tim Baker, who's the proprietor of the field.
Okay.
I don't know if they, at this point, if they have the proper language on it, but they were, we're gonna, Jerry will follow, and Connor will borrow back about that.
Okay.
I just wanted to say that the loan needs to be the total value of the project, and this just kind of didn't get into that particular motion.
Yeah, oh, that's fine, yeah.
The, the confusing part of this, I mean, please, it can be confusing for folks, is that um the city's not spending anywhere near six point six million dollars on this, you know? There's, I mean, it needs that loan order, so we're not actually allocating more, we're not actually spending more money on this. But um it has to match the total project cost, so um I think there's some confusion right now. Um we, we're not working, you know, on the city side about there needs to be a hundred thousand dollars identified from schools.
Yeah.
This, this, this doesn't seem to be the case, so, no, just.
Yeah, someone.
It's semantics.
Yeah, just someone will have to be, you know, city council to be enough.
So the motion, um, you had a B and F, you mentioned there was. Motion is that the city of Gloucester appropriate the amount of one hundred and ten thousand dollars as directed by the MSBA. So the total amount allocated by the city reflects two for project cost for the window door replacement project at the O'Malley school to put a amount of six point six million dollars. Nice and long.
Right, all in favor, stand.
All right.
Okay, so, okay, we have action. Um, uh, first item is to adopt revised assignment of students to schools policy, JC.
Can I say something to this? Sure. I do not see in what's in our packet, the adjustments that the committee has. They want, yeah. So, I think this is five hundred students to schools, and the committee, you see. This is what we had brought up from programs, but the committee had asked for revision to include people whose loans were debt, you know, some of them are extreme, so.
Oh, right, right.
Right, which is not in here.
Oh, I guess we're not ready to cable this.
I mean, this is what I read.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
Okay, we're, we're.
Thank you, sorry.
Um, okay. Next item is to accept, um, acceptance of grant for Gloucester Education Foundation. NJROTC grant as an amount of ten thousand dollars. Hang on, just second, hit all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I do.
Uh, done these two. Uh, we, in um executive session, voted to approve the new supervisors agreement. Um, which we have here in front of us. Okay, I got that.
Yeah.
I wasn't here, though.
I got two.
There's two different, two different.
Oh, the two of us.
You have extra copies, thanks.
Okay, um, so uh. Changes in this contract are their pay rate. Um, the first year, they're going to eighteen dollars an hour. Uh, year, well, that, with its current year, yeah, and fiscal twenty six, eighteen seventy five, and fiscal twenty seven, nineteen fifty. Um, we're adding in a differential pay at um the first. Step of paraprofessional play, pay if they supervise a classroom, which they're occasionally asked to do. It's not totally common, but it does happen. Um in a relative effect after our vote for, for leaving the contract. Um, we also added language to uh grandfather in this significant buyback for the employees, for employees hired prior to January twenty one, uh, January two thousand twenty four. And as we know, we're getting that out of the contracts as we look forward.
Wait, you grandfathered them in?
Out, it's not, oh. The grandfathered those before. Still, we will provide that, but you have to respond.
Okay, I thought you were.
Um, they wanted to be able to um have, have days, uh, not have to commit to work. So we put language that they're not required, but they may be asked, they can choose to work a lot. Um, we've added longevity pay. And, and they have agreed to combine their contract with crossing guards and our new contract, uh, called stu- supervisors. And it'll incorporate all the, of the estate contracts, so they decided that. So I move that we approve the New Supervisors Association memorandum agreement as presented. We're done. I think we're all in favor, say aye.
All right.
Okay, so uh we are going into executive session pursuant to executive session purpose two of Master of Law Thirty Eight, section twenty one A, to discuss strategy. And or to conduct contract negotiations among union personnel. The purpose three of MGM, uh, Master of Law Thirty Eight, section twenty one A, to discuss strategy with respect to budget bargaining with P. Um, ask me clinical DA and crossing guards, and we'll, uh, we'll come out to just vote. The crossing guards, if it is approved in the executive session. Okay, so, we'll call vote, please. I made the motion.
I guess I should, if I say much, I'll just say.
Thanks.
Mr. McKee.
Yes.
Mayor Varga.
Yes.
Chair Clancy.
Yes.
Mr. Menya. Ms. Prince.
Ms. Prince.
Yes.
Mr. Malvin.
Yes.
Just needs.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, anyone who's still hanging in there with us.